Good evening, I'll call this meeting to order if we can rise for a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmandy?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Morone?
Here.
All right, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3S.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Abstentions, motions unanimous. Number four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Number five, public question and answer. Is there any questions from the public? Mr. Kummerford.
Bill Comer for Broadview Drive. Mayor, I asked you about that trash stuff, I'm sure you have the paperwork.
So, the information given to me is that the total of those two weekend employees over the year is $23,590.
Okay, I'll go over this another time because I actually, I asked for this through the mayor for like, because the last meeting was canceled, I emailed him, I didn't get a response, so I went directly to Boston Midas who gave me the stuff. The stuff isn't the actual cost, so I'll share that with you guys, but it's not the actual cost, it totals up to about 130 rand, nowhere near as close to what the actuals are.
That $130,000 number includes normal weekday operations.
That's what I asked for, I asked for how much does it totally cost the taxpayers to collect the trash for the entire year?
My understanding was that you were asking about the weekend crew.
No.
But the $130,710 number is the annual cost, total annual cost.
Okay, we'll go over that at a later time, but we do have the information. The other day I was driving through the town, I happened to see, through the, through the mayor, through the chair, I'm sorry. I happened to see you with your dog and a bunch of people walking, looking at the parking lots, can you tell us who you were walking with and what was that, what was that for?
So, I was with Kevin Pajini, the town planner. I think Amy Torrey was there, Don Crouch, and Liz Davis, and Hawkins, and we were looking at the condition of the the town-owned spaces or parking areas that are behind the buildings on Center Street.
Okay, great, and one final thing to the chairman, several times you talked of that the town is aware about the conditions of the basketball courts, do we have an update exactly what the cause was for the failure?
So, I spoke to the town engineer yesterday, she had indicated that the, she didn't give me a cause for the failure, she just said that the contractor's aware of it, that they have a plan to scrape it and repaint it, and they think that that will address the issue.
Okay, because I still have a couple of concerns about that, and I sent you guys, I asked it to be on an agenda, I'm not going to be here in August, but I was hopeful that it would be on this one. Because they already went out there and repaired it, or scraped the areas down and patched it, I think at least three times, and the problem still is recurring. So, in my unprofessional opinion, kind of like the stairwell, it's not the paint. That's why I asked her to put it in writing, to, if, what the actual problems, what the contractor is saying what it is, because I think that we need to address that instead of scraping it down and painting it again, because it's not only failed on Wall Street, it's failed on the top, and then to Councilwoman Tada, she was concerned about the tennis courts, that's cracked. So, I think we kind of need to get this thing in writing as to what the actual cause is before you even entertain doing something.
Right, so the, the company that installed it has a 10-year warranty on it, so the scraping and repainting is on their dime, so they designed it, they built it, and they believe that they can address it. So, she didn't tell me what the cause was, and I didn't ask, but, but, you know, it's on their dime at this point.
I'll tell you what my thing is, and I know I'm going to extend past my three minutes, it's a, it's a serious water problem, the water is wicking through your slab, kind of like the same thing that's happening in the police department, okay, causing the contamination in the slab at the police department, you're virtually having the same thing, in my opinion, at the basketball courts. And there's no drainage, that's why I asked for a copy of the drainage schematics, there's nothing there. They virtually replaced the brand-new court in the exact location, engineering didn't design it, there's no drainage whatsoever. So, I've got videos of a river virtually running through it, around it, underneath it, so forth, and it's causing the moisture problem. So, what happens is that concrete wicks the moisture, and then the sun comes down, hits it, and it creates almost like a greenhouse effect, which causes the bubble to come up because the moisture's got to go somewhere. That's your cause, it has nothing to do with the paint. It's the problem with the water, and there is, there is, they've never improved any drainage, they never even put any drainage in there. Matter of fact, I was surprised to find out that engineering didn't even design the thing. The company that was contracted designed it, the town didn't set the elevations, it's not an ASB build, and they put it in the exact same location, and even the paint manufacturer said that it shouldn't be in a, in a wet accessible area, so my next question, which I don't get any answers to, is, did she make the contractor, or did Town Engineering Department make the contractor aware that that area even gets flooded? I appreciate your time, and I wish we can get some of this stuff in writing, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Kindly.
The 10-year warranty is on the paint, and there's a 20-year warranty on the concrete.
I stand corrected, thank you, sir.
But, but the point is, is that we didn't do it right the first time, I don't care if you have 100 years, does that mean if it's proven that there was no drainage, they're going to jackhammer, remove it? I mean, it's like buying a brand-new car, and, and the motor fails, the ignition's no good, and you don't have a steering wheel. You still have the car, there's a warranty, but the thing's failed, and that's what we have. $360,000, it's probably more than most of you guys up there paid for your first house, or your current one, and it's troublesome to know that it takes this much effort from a concerned taxpayer to try to get some type of resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening, Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive. I just want to point out, I've done this on, with concrete things in this town before, so the problem with concrete and moisture is exactly what Bill said, but the other problem is when it wicks it up, some of it stays, and then that's, that water gets trapped, and it's contaminated water, it's not the water we use. So, while it's drying, that water gets stuck and causes mold in the concrete. Now, this is my job, I'm going to tell you, this is what I do, and that caused a weakness in the concrete, which could cause those problems. So, you know, I, I don't know what kind of moisture barrier they put underneath, I have to look at the plans, I don't, I don't have access to the plans, but I just want you to think about that, because it may not be just the paint, which is a waste of time for people who are going to use it, either get it fixed right, you know, the contractor's responsible for it, and it's great, we have a warranty, well, enforce the warranty, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on, discussion of old business. Janice, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
So, last time I reported, I reported that I was working on what I thought could possibly be a solution, and I was talking to outside counsel regarding that, and as of today, my idea is not going to work, so I'm going to move to my next idea, which will have to be under review, so hopefully at the next meeting I'll report something more positive.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement to purchase 4 Fairfield Boulevard for $4.1 million.
Sucks. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So, this is the purchase of 4 Fairfield Boulevard, the purpose is not obvious from the agenda, and as a matter of fact, I'll invite the Board of Education to come forward and join us. So, as we are aware, adult education needs to move out of the historic train station, irrespective of the condition of the historic train station, they've outgrown it. The central office buildings have been rented for several years, and they were actually looking for more space, both to consolidate central office and adaptive education and adult education into one building. We became aware of this building, and the Board of Education is interested in use for those three purposes, for its administrative offices, for adult education, and for adaptive education, and they can speak further to its use. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and good evening, and just for the members of the public, so when we negotiate the lease or purchase of property, the council discusses this in executive session often, so that's why the council doesn't have a lot of questions, is because we've had them, you know, answered during the executive sessions, but Madam Superintendent, if you would introduce yourself and whatever you'd like to add to the conversation.
Sure. Good evening, Danielle Belizzi, Superintendent.
Hi, I'm Dominic Barone, Business Manager.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us, so just to add on to what Mayor Savoni had shared, we are looking, primary purpose actually, when we started, was for adult education, to find a new location for adult ed, it is a growing population in programs that we have there. In addition, in looking, we are looking for additional space for the Wallingford Transition Academy, which houses anywhere between 17 to 22 students yearly, and, and then central office as well, and that would allow us, if we, all three of us go together, that would allow us to let go of the lease that we currently have for central office, and for the rental that we pay every year for the Wallingford Transition Academy.
So, the, the space you're moving into is substantially larger than this, all the space you have now combined, correct?
Correct.
So, do you have plans for the remainder of the space?
So, the space that's available within that building is something that we can utilize for all three programs. We've gone through it to take a look, and so we've worked with our department, different departments, IT and the maintenance department, to take a look to see what we can do with the space for all three, you know, for central office, adult ed, and Wallingford Transition Academy, but it does need some build-out in terms of conference rooms, classrooms, office spaces, additional bathrooms, things like that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, certainly these projects, these places have been in flux over the last many years. I know the transition program, which is, you know, that's a program, to my knowledge, is for individuals with special needs that need to get some life skills, you know, cook a meal, make a bed, that kind of stuff, so that can be productive members of society, and that program has been moved, I think, five times over the last five years, so it would be great to get a home for these, this stuff, right? My question though, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, the, the agenda indicates that the matter before us is to schedule a public hearing to be held tonight, and my understanding is that we are not at that public hearing, or, is this the public hearing, or is the agenda item two scheduled the public hearing? I'm just trying to figure out, because it's, it expresses, says, "Schedule a public hearing to be held at 6:30 PM on July 23rd, 2024," so if we're scheduling a public hearing, maybe we're going to have it at 9 o'clock tonight, otherwise we have a problem with the agenda item, and I defer to whomever would like to opine on the legality of what's before us.
Well, currently the item we're discussing is the agreement for the purchase of the property at one price, and then the, the next one, item would be the bonding, to determine how we pay for it. Janice, what is your, if you would care to opine on the typo and the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, the, the item, the agenda item actually identifies tonight as the night of the public hearing, but Madam Clerk, you did publish notice of the, for tonight's, correct?
Yes, it was in the paper, July 17th.
So, it's been properly noticed under the charter, and
So, the, the agenda item
It is really the public hearing.
So, just, the agenda item should reflect, conduct a public hearing?
Instead of the word "schedule," but it does have the date and time, and so, and the, what it's being discussed, and it was properly noticed in, in the newspaper, so.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just trying to get the operative verb here.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So, we're not scheduling, we are conducting.
Correct, and, but right now we're doing the contract.
Understood.
Sure.
Okay, that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The existing lease that we're in, will there be a penalty for ending that lease early? Or are we ending it early?
That will have to be negotiated, but, you know, the earliest that the board actually would end up leaving that space won't be until next summer, so we're getting closer and closer to the end date of that lease, but that's going to have to be subject to some further negotiation. As the council is aware, that we, the property that we're purchasing has a tenant in a portion of the building, and will be taking in the income from that to, could offset any difference.
Okay, so the current lease that we're in, does that address breaking the lease? Is, does it, is it stipulated in there what the penalty is, or no?
Well, it would be, well, I don't want to get into what the negotiations with the landlord, but, I mean, the lease has a set term, so we, if we leave next summer, then we would be leaving early, so we started the conversation, we didn't want to start the conversation too early, with the landlord about ending that relationship. We don't know exactly when that will be, but it's definitely not going to be until the next year.
Okay, and then, when does the current lease expire? What's the date?
April of 26.
Okay, so theoretically, worst-case scenario, we're going to be paying, that, we could have to pay that lease through that date.
It is possible we would have to do that, I mean, they're not leaving, the earliest would be, the ideal time for them to leave is during the summer of next year, for the Board of Ed, everybody else can move in, but they would be the last ones to do that, so we will work to see how we can resolve that.
Okay, thank you. And then, the appraisal, just for the sake of the public, so we're, we're offering $4.1 million, the appraisal was for how much?
Four million.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Members of the public, questions on this item?
Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive. How many square feet is it? The building?
It is 45,098 square feet, 3.59 acres.
That's pretty nice. How about renovations? And was there, was there a detailed inspection of the building before we came to this point?
Well, a full detailed inspection would, is a condition of the agreement, but the board has done a couple of inspections themselves, and they would have to retrofit, they would have to fit it out for their use.
And we have no idea how much it could cost? Even a rough idea?
So, what we do, what we did with our staff is we went through with our staff and gave the best estimate that we could at this time. The plan is, if this goes through, to then obviously get more formalized estimates and exact amounts for what the renovations will be.
Right, I'm just concerned that once you start opening things up, you know, it's a can of worms, like the police station, that's all.
There is a lot of open, a lot of the space is unfinished, or it's open, it's not, that's unfinished, it's open, so, you know, making it and adapt, adapting it to different office spaces is probably
Not so bad?
Not too bad, I mean, obviously, you don't know until you get in, but it's not like there's all kinds of walls that would have to be torn down or anything, it's a pretty open space.
All right, that's cool, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back to the council. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing I want to add, so this, I don't think it was really on purpose that this is happening, but I think what's kind of happening in this area that I see as a positive is we're almost kind of forming a little municipal area over there, so I was not in favor of the police station moving over there, but, you know, there it is, and we have Parks and Rec, obviously, is already there, that will be your neighbor, now we have Board of Ed and Adult Ed that will be over there, so I think it's, it's kind of nice what's happening over there, just by chance, so we're kind of acquiring these properties, and obviously, you're not renting anymore, it solves the issue with a train station, and so I think it's a, it's a positive move. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I did have was regarding public transportation and the conversations that, that may have been ongoing right now about doing that, is there any update as far as the, as far as the bus routes are concerned to cover that building?
So, not at this time, we did, Mr. Barone and I have been doing some research regarding that, and so we're going to continue to look into to see if there's any way to have a bus routes added or changed to meet the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else from the council? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes, motion is unanimous. Moving on to number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will open the public hearing for an ordinance appropriating $5.1 million for the acquisition of 4 Fairfield Boulevard and certain building renovations thereon, and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the town, and notes in anticipation of such bonds, and an amount not to exceed $5.1 million to finance said appropriation. Public hearing is open, does any members of the public have any questions or comments on this, on this item? Going once? Going twice? Back to the council, does council have any questions on this item? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. I made a motion, or, or I'll move the item, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, so we should have discussion now on the motion, which I don't presume there's any, Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll.
Allenson? Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes, motion unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve an appropriation in the amount of $206,392 from surplus account, police to police tasers, account number 200 TBD.
Second.
All right, motion's made in seconded, good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Job Intern, Wallingford Police Department.
All right, Chief, could you explain what the, the plan is?
Sure, so, in preparation for the 2425 budget, what we do at the police department is get our department heads together and ask if there's any needs, equipment-wise, or any sort of upgrades in what we use, we're always looking to better ourselves. I feel that was identified for improvement was our TASER, so we currently utilize the TASER X-26, that TASER came out in 2013, it's an older platform, it only is capable of firing two shots, you have one that sits on a TASER, and there's one underneath that you have to try to move over to the top, once that is expelled. What we see that with the X-26 is that we're not making good contact when they are deployed, they're not being effective, and we're looking to do something that would enhance the safety of both the, for the officers and for the people that we're dealing with, so TASER has come out with a model called the, basically it's TASER 10. So, instead of only having two cartridges, you now have 10 cartridges, instead of being able to fire two at a time, which spread when you shoot them, you can now dial it into one singular round. The capabilities of the X-26 are 21 feet, so you have a max range of 21 feet, two prongs come out of the cartridge, they spread, more than likely you're not going to hit anything, which enhances the ability of the officer to unfortunately use other methods, other methods if the individual that we're dealing with has a weapon, potentially could be deadly force. The TASER 10 has a 43-foot range, it only, enhances our ability to provide cover and concealment for the officers, allows them to use different techniques that they have to de-escalate the situation, it's a better, it's a better tool, and that, that's why we're here today, to try to, to enhance our ability to use that. We budgeted for it, and then we kind of took it out of the budget to, basically to use a surplus to purchase that if the council so decides.
Questions from the council? Counselor Tada.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that video today, that was helpful. I just have a question about the funding, just because the, it says surplus account NA to, account number 200 to be determined, and then I know in your memo, or, I'm sorry, in Chief DeMayo's memo, it mentioned the money being removed from the budget, but the funds are now available in CRA funds, so can you just explain where the money's coming from at this point?
So, is my belief that coming from surplus from budget year 2324?
No, I'll, I'll take that, so this is the remaining of the CRA money.
Okay, so, so not police department?
It's not police money, this is Fund 200, it's the CRA fund.
Okay.
So, if this is approved, there's still, there's a plow truck that's approved that hasn't been bought yet, but that's approved for $250,000, so if this is approved, it leaves about $90,000 left, and then that's it for that.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, any questions from the public? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allenson? Carmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Morone?
Yes, motion passes, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, moving on to number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the revised food establishment fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in seconded, good evening. When you get settled, if you kindly introduce yourselves for the record.
Louise Hazelwood, Acting Director, Health Department.
Hi, good evening, Mike Hughes, Chief Sanitarian from the Health Department.
Chris Negreany, Senior Clerk, Health Department.
Good evening, okay, would you like to start with, I guess, why are we raising the rates, and how did you, I saw the backup and the
So, on June 25th, the council approved the revised food establishment ordinance, and this is the second part of that, which reflects the changes in the fees, to really bring it up to date, because they haven't been changed in, I think, 10 years.
Okay, questions from the council? Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Is there, I didn't see a comparison as to what the current rates are, is that something you can provide us now?
Yes, we have a folder for each council.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, these are the, so these are the current, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, there's a fee workbook sheet, which shows the existing number of food establishments, the current fees with totals from revenue, and then the updated reflected if it's passed as submitted, and there is a separate sheet that shows the proposed food service fee schedule.
Okay, I see, so this, this was the current, this, okay, and then this one is the proposal, okay, I'm sorry, they, I didn't realize that was, okay, so, so it looks like it's going up?
So, we also did a comparison of the adjoining towns from Meriden, Cheshire, and North Haven, in reference to Wallingford's existing.
Okay, and do you, I don't know how many of these you do per year, do you have an idea of how much extra revenue it would bring in if, if the new rates were to be approved?
Yeah, currently, what we, what we currently brought in are from last annual report would have totaled 18,000 approximately, and with the updated fees, it would bring into the general fund about 71,000 instead.
Okay. It looks like the mic didn't quite pick you up, so I just want to repeat what you said, so currently, it brings in about 18,000 into the general fund, and then, if we update them, it will bring in about 71,000?
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm torn on this, I, I like that Wallingford is business friendly, I like that we do as much as we can to try to encourage business, and so, you know, anytime we're, we're raising fees on businesses, I, I'm typically not a huge fan of that, I understand we're still, it looks like we're still below other, other towns, even with, with this, which is good. But I just, I kind of want to hear what everyone else has to say, and that's, if I do end up voting no, that's just why I think, you know, we, we kind of try to not burden our businesses, and I'm not so sure that raising the rates and getting that extra revenue was really worth it in the grand scheme of just trying to be business friendly, so, that's it for now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Fishmine?
So, I have to ask why? Why now? Coming out of a pandemic, I understand the department, and Eloise, welcome back.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. But I, you know, why?
I think the primary reason was is that, one, we updated the ordinance to reflect the new statute in the regulation, which is the FDA Food Code, which requires a different detail of inspection that we do, based on the classification of the facility, and the other thing that the department has been seeing for quite some time is when we do the restaurant reviews for new restaurants, or those that require remodel, since there is no fee in there concerning the plan revision, so, we've been getting, and have been historically getting plans that sometimes come in truly on, on like a napkin, and so, it's not really practical, and it's not, certainly not professional, so that we spend a great deal of time trying to get the information out of the proposed business owner as to what it is that they're proposing, and we spend a lot of time doing that, so, one of our primary things was to put in their, a plan review fee, which is not currently existing, in the hopes that, one, it's going to save the restaurateur a lot of time, and us, because it delays their process for the opening of the facility. So, I don't know, if, Mike, you want to speak to some other aspects?
Sure, I also believe the penalty fees, so we believe that the higher penalty fees will aid in getting non-compliant licenses to take it a little bit more seriously, and cut down on the amount of time required for that follow-up as well.
No, I appreciate that, but I'm looking at the compliant restaurateur, you know, the little guy who just wants to open their restaurant, does everything cool, I mean, you look at a Class III, right, presently, the license is $75, and what we're contemplating here is raising that to $300. I mean, it's one of the most difficult businesses to be in, especially, you know, we learned that through the pandemic, you know, stuff spoil and all of that stuff, I would have no problem, you know, with the plan review, right? Put in a fee, you know, a reasonable fee, obviously, somebody who's in violation, you know, penalties, we deal with that, because although, you know, in Hartford, they think that penalties don't prevent people from committing crimes, I think the opposite, so, certainly, if we need to deal with penalties and, you know, re-inspections and that kind of stuff, but, you know, just to get a license and to raise that, I really can't support what's before us, so, you know, I would love to work together on something, I mean, I don't know if it passes out of the current form, but that's my thought, so, you know, the totality of what's before us, I, I can't support, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned a change in revenue, 16,000, 71,000, but you also mentioned that there's larger compliance issues that you have to sort of look at, do you have a, an under, do you have a, so that, that's revenue you're talking about, so that's 16,000 versus 71,000, that's money we would collect on this stuff, do you have, have you guys wrapped your heads around how much more it's going to cost to do the inspections with the additional requirements?
Well, if you look at a Class III or a Class IV inspection, we're now required to use the FDA inspection form that the state adopted, and it's much more detailed, much more complicated, not only to complete the inspection, but to review it with the restaurateurs, so they have an understanding of what's required moving forward, so I would say that I think it's doubled the amount of time that it takes an inspector to be inside a facility.
Okay, so, so given that, you know, like, 40-hour work week, finite amount of time, so many restaurants to see, essentially, Class III, Class IV, it's more of your time, less restaurants you can cover.
Correct.
And we're paying the same as taxpayers each week for you to be paid, because it's 40-hour work week, it's not overtime. And, and in your estimation, then, that this should help right the ship in terms of what it costs for your extra time, but also, we haven't adjusted our fee schedule in 10 years, so it would be good to, to recoup a bit, is that sort of the goal?
It's twofold, correct, and, and part of it is, you know, again, we haven't adjusted our fee schedule in, in quite some time, and we did a comparison of the surrounding towns, and the dollar that we're proposing really is in line with what the surrounding towns are charging, and we also added an element of a discount, if you will, for residents who own a restaurant or a food facility in town, again, it's a give back to somebody who lives in town and wants to make a living in town.
Well, and I also noticed that in some cases where you adjusted by class, there's other ones where it's a flat rate, where it's actually more competitive than other towns, like, so you didn't, you know, so for like re-inspection fees, the plan reviews and so forth, you don't, you don't scale that to this, it's just a flat cost, which, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for our edification, public edification as well, can you quickly or briefly talk about the differences between each of the four classes?
Sure, so, a Class I establishment is very, very minimal, it's typical of a convenience store, prepackaged food, not much by, by way of food safety concern, a Class II would be a little bit more usually, things that are minimally processed, cooked to order and out the door, Class III would be your full-service restaurant, that's pretty typical, mom and pop's place, a Class IV would be an establishment that has special processes or caters to a vulnerable population, so that's, so, as you go up, there is more requirements, and it is more time-consuming to do those inspections, and on the plan review side of things, there, there's, there's a lot more in that, so there really is a lot more involved as you go up in class, and the frequency of those inspections also is, is more.
Thank you for that. As far as quality of service to the, the establishments that are looking for these types of permits, et cetera, do you have to increase headcount in any way, or is it just, can we, can you do the inspections on an annual basis, based on the headcount that you have, albeit just a little bit slower?
So, that's a good question, so we have two full-time sanitarians and one part-time sanitarian, ultimately, I think, moving forward, the director would like to have three full-time sanitarians, but that's not what's being proposed at this point, and I think she wants to put this into place so that we can actually do an assessment to see how many facilities we are able to inspect to the, with the existing staff, and really, to, when you add the element of the plan review, it, it's a benefit to the restaurateur, because a lot of times, I mean, they're delayed in opening, because it's, you know, they didn't submit properly what they needed to, again, they tried to perhaps, you know, pencil it in themselves, and they weren't getting, they weren't hitting every element that needs to be hit now when you do a plan review per the FDA Food Code.
Right, so if I can summarize, because the rates are 10 years old, and if we keep with that rate structure, it's going to take longer, because the additional FDA requirements just mean, you know, you said, more than twice, or twice the amount of hours taken to do the actual forms, et cetera, those businesses will have a delay necessarily in opening for those cases, and that there is headcut, headcount funding that needs to come from somewhere, and that doing these rates would accommodate those needs and requirements to service those entrepreneurs even better.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Could you give me an idea? I'm just going to use the name of an establishment, because it's known, what class restaurant would Rosa's Deli be, two or three?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but I would imagine most deli style are two, the, typically, what the difference is, is if you're cooking in advance and cooling, that's usually the difference between a two and a three, so I'm not sure their specific menu, but I would, I would imagine a two maybe.
Most delis, you're walking in and getting a sandwich or a sub, and they may be catering stuff, and they're all over town, those are usually twos?
If, if, usually twos is, you know, like your, your classic deli, if you're getting something to order and it's going out, but if they're doing complex things in the back, they have sauces, or they have dishes that they prep, cook, and then cool, that would bump them up into a classic.
They might, they might, they're probably three, okay.
They probably could be.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
What I thought was a cough drop was a sweet tart. There's a fire chief here. All right, that was enjoyable, okay. I'm telling you. From what I could see, the, the licensing fees, straight across the board, seem to have just gone up fourfold, Class I was 25, now it's going to be 100, we work our way up, 50 becomes 200, and you can see the pattern, and as I look across for each of the classes, for the most part, we either just, we're well below Meriden, Cheshire, North Haven, this is for the benefit of the public, and then, the new fees, for the most part, we're below, a little bit below, or a tad higher than Meriden, but still well below Cheshire, and far, and well below North Haven in every category. I think just to, to, you know, to portray that, whether there's a sense of fairness here, the fact that it hasn't been done in 10 years in Wallingford does not surprise me, I would have expected it to have been 20, but that's okay, I really have no problem with all of this, my, my biggest concern would be, or my primary concern would be, in those instances where you're required to put in a lot of extra work, is there enough of a deterrent, in other words, for people to, for, I don't want to say scofflaws, but those people that are not, you know, that are not doing what they should, and I know what happens, we see things in the paper, I've seen you, you come out, you come out, and you do an inspection, and there, the most minor things in general, still may seem serious, but many times, a remedy down the spot, or within the next day. Those types of thing, and I'm assured that that's the vast majority of everything you come across, but if you come across someone who is showing that, you know, they're really trying to skirt the regulations as much as possible, do you feel this is, gives you enough of a, of a hammer, so to speak, to, to, to keep these folks in line, if they exist?
Sure, I, I do think so, especially the suspended permit and reinspection, reinstatement fees is not something that we typically do, we don't look to shut down and, and take revenue away from businesses, but using that tool in conjunction with the reinspection fees that we reserve for things that really need an onsite reinspection for us to physically go there, I do think it would give us enough, the FDA Food Code does allow, it's a little bit more lenient on how we get information back, we can take emails and photos and things of that nature as, as proof of compliance, but I do think how it's portrayed here would, would give us enough to do that, yes.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm okay, I just, I do want to make one brief editorial comment. For your benefit, for the public's benefit, more than anything, and my colleagues, I, as you know, I, at Lyman Hall, I'm in the Culinary Arts Program, and we operate our food truck, and we are inspected regularly, and I also did a little, helped out the Holy Trinity, I mean, yeah, Holy Trinity Carnival this year, just helping out the person responsible for their permitting and their food safety, and as such, I've had multiple opportunities to, to interact with Mr. Hughes, coming in and doing the inspections, and, and I just want to compliment you in front of everybody on your professionalism, but more importantly, you're, you're reasonable, you're, you don't mess around, let's get that straight, you know, we've, you know, he's very, very particular, and so, it's, it's, it's good, for me, it's refreshing to know that someone is, is a stickler, and is really watching out for the rules, but is also understanding of what it takes to run a business, and is trying to be, you know, work well with, with, with folks, and that means he works well with the public, that means a representative of the town is working well with the public, and that's really all we can ask in the end, when we have employees that are out there doing their jobs for us, so you do a good job, you represent the town well, I'm really not trying to schmooze you, because I know if, if my sink's dirty, you're going to give me a bad grade, so, that's the way it goes, but thank you, I appreciate you giving me the leeway to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, how long would the inspections take on average, like a Class II before versus now?
I would say.
All in, like the inspection and any paperwork you have to do when you go back?
The paperwork included, I would say, if a Class II was in good order, it may, previously, it was probably about an hour, you can go in there and kind of, if you've been to that place before and you know the, the establishment, since the FDA, there's a lot of the Form 1B, which are for ill food worker reporting, there's a lot of new signage, there's a lot of things that are not familiar to area businesses, and actually have not been very familiar to us until very recently, so I'd say that's probably easily over an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes, and then, if we can't get the information to them, then, there is quite a bit of follow-up that we've been seeing to explain, another thing that's been happening is, it used to be required that a certified food protection manager was only required to be one person, and they were allowed to train everybody under them, that's no longer the case, now, there has to be someone onsite at all times, so in conjunction with this, we've actually been doing food safety classes to teach and get those people certified, and that's also been time-consuming to get people in through the door and get them up to speed.
What does it take to, how long is that class?
That class, we've been doing, it's an eight, eight to nine-hour session on one day, and we've been having people come back a week later to take that test, and that's at least a couple hours, so.
And what's our cost to that?
We've been doing it at a reduced cost, I think we've, was it 100?
It's 100, yeah.
So, we've been doing it for $100, if you were to go out and do that through Surf Safe, which is what we teach, it would be closer to 2.
So, something like, like a Subway or Nardell's, like, they, somebody there at all times has to be?
Yes, yes.
Have gone through this class?
Exactly.
And then, do you, are you finding that with these new classes, that these, I'm sorry, with these new inspections, are they, is a lot of like education kind of to them for the new, this is the new way, will that, will that shorten things then in subsequent years, if everybody starts to be, have been educated over a year or two, or?
That's the hope, that it, that it will be, but there's always a component of education, in fact, I, I think that everybody in the office, we kind of lead with the education first, and we find better results when you do that, so, it's, it's always there, but I, I would hope that it would lessen over time.
Okay, and then, the reinspection, so there's a $100 reinspection fee, if somebody comes in and there's something like simple, that's like, I'm going to swing by tomorrow, are you charging, typically, you charge the whole fee or no?
No, no, there's actually an option on, on the new FDA form for corrected onsite, which is what we use.
Okay.
Where our, our standard operating procedure that we've been developing is for that fee to only be assessed when an onsite reinspection is required, so if you, you, you have something very wrong, and you need to go out and see it onsite to do that, and even at that, we're giving people follow-ups in between, so we really try to work with people first to make sure they understand, and we've reserved those reinspection fees for when people really aren't being compliant and, or, or need further education. education.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Fishbein.
So, oh, I'm sorry. How long are the permits good for?
One year.
And the renewal, is the same fee paid on a renewal?
Yes, and this particular year, when we changed the ordinance, it changed the time period, so they used to be due by June 30th, and now it's on a calendar year. So in this particular year, 2024, assuming you pass the new fees, their licensing has been postponed until January. In other words, we gave them six extra months with the anticipation that the fees would go up.
I appreciate that. And I guess the additional education, you know, additional education for an employee takes that employee away from their job, and there's benefit to the education. I don't disagree, but that's an added cost to the business also, right?
That education for the Serve Safe is required by the, by the new state law.
Oh, understood. But, you know, when the government comes in and says, you know, you know, take your employees off of the line and train them on this, and they're not learning about their job, and they're not making product, and they're not helping the economy, you know, there's a societal public policy benefit to that, but there's also a negative impact to the business operator. So, you know, I'm putting all this together because, you know, ultimately, it's not about revenue raising, or at least it shouldn't be. It should be about the safety of food, if people don't get sick, they don't die, you know, that kind of stuff. And, you know, I, you know, we don't charge a homeowner when the police officer, and I'm not even suggesting that, you know, a police officer comes to check because the alarm goes off, right? If it's a false alarm, and it's like, I think it's six times, then we, we charge them, you know, because that's a bad thing. And, you know, quite frankly, I would be in support of just getting rid of the initial fee for a license. You know, once again, the bad guys, you know, let's get the bad guys, you know, but if you had free licenses, you know, and then the bad guys get penalized for being bad, you know, maybe that would help, and anyway.
I suspect if you had free licenses, you'd have a lot more individuals who don't live in town who want to open in town.
Is that a bad thing?
Well, if the existing restaurants are also residents, they have more of a pride. So in that regard, yeah, I would think so.
Okay, let me, let me just, while we go down that road, it says valid proof verification of residency required to receive discounts. So they would have to reside in the town, and obviously because you're involved in it, it would be a business operating in the town for the 20% discount.
Correct.
That's the thing. I don't know. I, I like having a variety of different foods and stuff like that, and places to go, and, you know, anyway, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You know, we had this discussion a year or two ago, I guess coming out of the pandemic, we had a discussion about the fees. So I think what you've proposed isn't unreasonable, but I think, I guess my concern is sort of along the lines of Counselor Fishbein, and that is that, you know, you get paid a fee to protect, you get paid salaries and whatnot that are not contingent on any of these fees to protect the public from, you know, from bad operators in food service. And so regardless of how many inspections you do or the quality, you know, what your findings are, you know, like your fee, your salary stays the same, right? Because you're here to protect the public. So then you charge a business a fee to have a license, which then they pass on to their customers, you know, as part of the fee that they charge for goods and services. So I pay taxes, you know, to the town to pay you guys for the excellent work that you do, but then I also pay higher prices at the restaurant to accommodate the fees that you charge, you know, that also goes into the, into the, our tax revenue. So I'm kind of okay with the fees where they are. I think if the plan review, or if you want to have a fee for plan review and you wanted to, you know, sort of punish the bad operators, I think that's reasonable, but I think, respectfully, I think I'm, I would rather pass on the increase in the fees. Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public?
I wish I went to work earlier, then I wouldn't show up here. So we're going to pass on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conroy, if you could.
Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive, I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
So we're going to pass on the increases to the public. That's a question. We're going to pass on the increased fees to the public and not the business owner, correct?
Well, the proposal would be the opposite.
Nope. I understand, so if the proposal doesn't pass, the costs are passed to the public, to the residents, to the everyday taxpayer, correct?
Correct.
And you're all okay with that? All right.
Anyone else? All right, back to the council. Counsel Tatta.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure I followed that, Mr. Conroy, unfortunately. I don't.
I can clarify if you'd like. Would you like me to clarify it?
I mean, I guess it's up to the, I guess it's up to the chairman, I wasn't trying to.
All right, let me clarify it. If the increases don't go through, you still have to do more work through the chair to the, to the board here. Yes?
Correct.
And that's an increased, you spend more money, correct, than you do right now, you're going to, or you do anyway. You do to serve certifications, right? With $100 less than a private company does for every individual, which is mandated by law, so it has to be done. So you actually save them $100 for every employee they go to?
That's correct.
And you're now, with the increased inspection criteria, you have to spend more time, so you, so we have to spend more money on it.
Correct.
Now, if we don't increase those fees to cover those increased costs, those fees get passed to the public because someone's paying for it. It's not free. So that means that I pay for it and every other taxpayer does. And while the business owner, hey, listen, I like it. We have such a great variety downtown, I think we're doing a wonderful job. I think that, oh, there's a lot of good stuff going on, but a little increase to cover the cost, which probably doesn't, won't even cover it completely, isn't a lot to ask from our business partners, because we take some as a residents and they take some. So if, did I clarify now what I meant? That we're going to pass those extra costs to the public and leave the fees where they are right now for the businesses? If, if it doesn't pass?
Yes, clarify.
Now, do you understand what I meant?
I do understand.
All right.
I don't know that I necessarily agree, but I do understand.
You don't have to agree, but you're passing the cost to the public, and that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that everybody understands that, that's what you do when you vote no, you pass the cost to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to reopen public comment after you closed it. Is, but your current staff is enough to handle this, correct? You're not asking for additional staff or additional funding?
Not at this point, but as I said, I do believe that moving forward, because right now we have two full-time and one part-time, moving forward, that there may be a request to have that part-time become a full-time.
Okay. And I guess my, my, you know, when I said initially, I'm not in favor of, you know, raising the fees on the businesses too. I think, I think something that we tend to forget too is that businesses are taxpayers too. So, and businesses are actually, are a huge taxpayer in town. I mean, without businesses, you know, residential taxes go substantially up, and so, you know, it's kind, I think, you know, maybe it's easy to say, well, we'll just keep charging fees to businesses, but businesses pay taxes too. So I don't, again, I think I'm probably on the side of no for raising these fees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just to address your comments, Mr. Conroy, I completely understand where you're coming from. You know, I have a family of five, we like to eat, we like to eat in restaurants, we like to eat takeout, and so I'm going to pay these fees one way or another, either in the increased cost of goods and services or in my taxes, right? And so to me, it's the guy that hangs the shingle to put up a restaurant is the one taking all the risk. So I would prefer to give him, you know, a little easier benefit upfront and pay for it later. And I think your argument makes sense to me, I just, you know, I'm just on the opposite side. Anyone else in the council? Counsel Fishbein.
Yeah, I think anything we can do to incentivize businesses to come to town is a benefit. You know, we certainly have areas of town that are vacant. You know, a business says, hey, come to Wallingford because they're not going to charge for the license, you know, that's an additional taxpayer. That actually lessens the burden on the rest of the taxpayers. So incentivizing businesses to come to town actually decreases taxes across the board because businesses, as the chairman said, you know, when I buy a computer for my home office, I don't pay taxes on that. If a business buys a computer for its office, you're supposed to pay personal property taxes on that. Something, it's a total distinction. So when a business moves into town, let's say a coffee shop, and they have all the infrastructure and all that stuff, all of that income, personal property, is additional tax revenue that enhances our economy, not only through the products that they produce and they make available to our community, but they're working in the community, and we add added tax benefits. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds.
I'd like clarification on how, if a business owner doesn't own the property they're in, how they pay property tax as an entity?
Assets.
Personal property.
Personal property tax, right.
Personal property tax is on the equipment, the.
Okay, I was just asking for clarification, right? Because it's, well, because it is, it is a bit different though. It is a bit different. It's actually a lot different. To the point of, to the person who takes the risk, they are taking that risk, therefore that's an expected cost. But if you don't adjust your fees and we raise people's taxes again, then we are passing that on to them if we don't adjust the fees of this service. So in a roundabout way, yeah, but in a roundabout way, no, right? It kind of is both ways, but to Mr. Conroy's point, like, the people that buy that stuff, yes, the cost could be passed on to them, but at the same time, if you don't adjust any of that, they're going to be paying more eventually when they have to do longer inspections or the cost of it goes up in general. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm trying to wrap my head around this. As a business owner, you pay for licenses, you pay for certifications, depending on what category of business that you're in, you know, it's the cost of doing business. I'm not going to move my restaurant into Wallingford because they lowball the health department process. I mean, there's a perception problem there. If your sole reason for not opening a restaurant or for opening a restaurant in Wallingford is because it's cheap and I can get an easy certificate, it just, that doesn't make sense. And to Mr. Conroy's point, you absolutely are passing it on to the residents of the town because you will need the addition. People, the business owners will be screaming about, why is it taking six, 10, 12 weeks in order to get, to get my, my application processed? Or I can't open and I still have to pay my rent, I still have to pay staff, et cetera. So it doesn't really, you know, passing it on to the business owner in this type of industry is an assumption that you are paying for these on an annual basis, and you're not just taking the pulse of one town, it's what do the average costs of licenses, you know, in a state actually, actually cost? And it's all averaged, averaged out, and we're still well below that average.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Counsel Laffin.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Regan just said, and I know we're paying for the health department to exist and work anyway. This isn't going to make the health department or the sanitation guys self-sustaining entirely, but I guess it's a step in that direction, and especially if we're going to be adding another halftime position to get to a third full-time. That, I'm kind of hung up though on that class that, like, that everybody needs to take. How often is that held?
We've been trying to do that, I think we've already done it twice, but we're looking to do that quarterly, just kind of as a service to do that, because we realize it is a requirement and a burden. So we're trying to offer that at a lower cost so we can get people in there and do it, so.
And then, is it, is it something that could be like a video thing that people watch at home and take it like an online class, or are you, you are hands-on instructing them?
Yes, yes, we've actually been holding it over at the OEM across from Sheehan, the fire station over there, we've been using that over there and teaching the class. We also find that it's great to be face-to-face with these people and to actually be able to convey our expectations for what their businesses are going to operate like while we're teaching them. So it's been a rich medium to talk to those people and then get some face time with them. It's been pretty good, but so, yeah. And there are other options, I believe there's seven different avenues to do that, there are some online options that they can choose, all of them are a little bit more expensive, but.
Okay, so there's different ways to get this certification besides just.
There, yeah, absolutely.
Although you might be the cheapest.
And probably one of the better ones.
Right.
Also, those, those other options are mostly done from a computer where there's like a proctor that has to look at your entire room, you're not getting a hands-on instructor, you're not getting a hands-on instructor, like from the health department, from the other services.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah, even, even the one that we teach at the health department, they, when they want you to take that, you sit in front of a computer screen and you're led through like a Zoom meeting instead of having an instructor that, and also, you know, just even translation services or anything like that, that's not offered. They offer it in a different, if a different language, but it's not necessarily face-to-face.
And are you finding that a lot of the people that a restaurant may send are like the managers or like one representative for each shift, or are they sending like 17-year-old kids there to get this, like?
No, no, it's been typical of, usually I've seen owners and managers in different classes, and people are more than happy to send their people. We've had a good passing rate as well, the couple of times that we've done it already, it's been pretty good, and like I said, it's been rich, and I think it's a good service for the community.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Tatta.
Thank you. Sorry to, it's me again.
That's okay.
I think I just wanted to make it clear, you know, why I'm kind of a little riled up about this. I think with businesses, it's, it's not just your department, but, you know, you all seem very friendly and professional, and that's a great thing when we have businesses in town and you come in and you're helpful and professional, and I know, you know, our other departments same way. I think that's a huge benefit of doing business in Wallingford, that, you know, from the building department to planning and zoning, to everybody, that we have a positive, you know, businesses have a positive experience with all of you, and it certainly seems that way. But, you know, the $100 for a business here, you know, that's not the only permit and the only fee that they have. So, you know, you open a business and you might have to, you know, you might need a zoning variance, and there's a, there's a fee for that, and you have to, you know, sometimes you have to get a lawyer for that, and then, you know, you have maybe an inland wetlands issue potentially on your property, and there's a fee for that, and you have to go to that, and then, you know, planning and zoning and building permits, and, you know, sometimes in some towns, your sign is a few inches too big, and you have to pay $300 for, you know, to deal with that. And then if you're on a state road, sometimes the state comes in and you need certain curb cuts, and there's a few hundred dollars for that, you need to hire an engineer. I mean, it's fees upon fees upon fees, it's not, you know, so, so the $100, you know, isn't just in a vacuum where it's, you know, oh, you know, we're going to raise this $50 or $100. It's, you know, we have to look at all of these fees for these businesses, and it could, you know, that could add up to thousands of dollars if every single department comes in and says, hey, we want to raise our fees $100. You know, that's, that's a big deal. So I just want to make it clear, it's nothing, you know, it's nothing against you or what you're proposing, it's just I'm trying to look at the whole picture and, you know, Wallingford's, I think Wallingford's very business-friendly, I think, you know, economic development and with Don Crouch there, I think is, you know, another friendly face and really trying to work hard to bring businesses in, so that's kind of my, my view on all this. So I just wanted to make it clear where I was coming from. Thank you.
We understand, sure.
Anyone else in the council? Boy, it's rare that we have an issue that there's such a, like a sharp divide in philosophies, right? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson. Carmandy.
Yes.
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Regan.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tatta.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Morone.
And I vote no, but the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1757.95]
Okay, moving on to number 11. Discussion possible action for a Choate presentation and request for an air easement for a pedestrian bridge over Christian Street. This goes to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representatives from Choate are here. They have approached the administration. This is an issue for consideration by the council, because it involves town property. They want to propose a pedestrian bridge for the top, the highest point on Christian Street between North Elm and East Main, and that's what they're going to talk to you about.
Hi, I'm Allison Katie, Chief Communications Officer, Choate Rosemary Hall.
Bill Wright, Director of Operations, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Town Councilors, Mayor
I'm sorry, Ms. Katie, if you could just lean into the microphone a little bit. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Town Councilors, Mayor Savoni, staff, and Wallingford neighbors. Choate Rosemary Hall is appearing before you this evening to introduce a project aimed at improving pedestrian safety and accessibility to our campus. We are grateful for your time and consideration, and we welcome any questions you may have. Over the years, during the approval processes for several recent campus projects, we have heard from the community and our neighbors' concerns regarding parking, congestion, congestion, and pedestrian traffic in and around campus. We take these suggestions, criticisms, and concerns seriously, as the safety and well-being of our students, campus adults, visitors, and the surrounding community neighbors are of utmost importance to us. To better understand the needs and opportunities to address this, Choate has spent considerable time and resources studying and analyzing the use, buy, and flow of pedestrians and vehicles through the campus. And in ongoing efforts to enhance pedestrian safety and movement, we have reconfigured pedestrian walking paths to steer pedestrians away from the four-way intersection. We have consolidated mid-block crosswalks, and we have installed flashing crosswalk beacons. Several times each year, we speak to our students about where and how to use crosswalks safely. To mitigate event traffic and congestions, we have changed the location and setup of several major institutional events, and we've improved and moved campus parking. Now, as the next step in our plan to migrate parking and direct event traffic away from the center of campus, we are proposing an elevated pedestrian bridge over Christian Street near the entrance to Rosemary Lane. As you may know, the athletic quadrant of our campus, which includes numerous playing fields and facilities, is located on the south side of Christian Street, while the parking to support these facilities is on the north side. Given the significant use of these facilities by our athletes, students, staff, spectators, renters, and community members, ensuring safe pedestrian crossing in this area is crucial. Many of our students and staff, as well as visiting athletes, parents, fans, and other guests, including town residents and local youth sports teams, park in the Colony Hall Lot and need to cross Christian Street to access the fields and the track. Unfortunately, the area's sightlines are not conducive to a safe at-grade crosswalk. Both the current Local Traffic Authority Chief John Ventura and former LTA Bill Wright have studied the area and agreed that an at-grade crosswalk would inherently be problematic and likely not approved by the town. Therefore, the proposed elevated pedestrian crossbridge is a potential solution to move pedestrians safely across the street. The unique nature of this project involves an easement agreement between Choate Rosemary Hall and the town of Wallingford regarding the use of air rights over Christian Street. And while legal counsel for both parties have begun discussing the framework of such an agreement, we wanted to introduce the concept to you early in the process to seek your feedback and comments. We are currently approximately 90% through the design process for the bridge and have prepared renderings and supporting materials for your review. Before finalizing the design, we will ensure that the bridge complies with State of Connecticut Department of Transportation standards for height and that the Americans and, excuse me, and the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements for accessibility. Choate Rosemary Hall understands that additional approval from local land use boards and commissions may be required. The proposed bridge, as currently conceived, will move hundreds of campus pedestrians across Christian Street out of crosswalks, improving the movement of traffic daily. Provide safe, accessible, and efficient crossing of Christian Street, where a crosswalk would not be approved, for faculty, staff, guests, and community members on campus to compete, recreate, and to enjoy community events. It would sit on Choate-owned property beyond the setback on either side of Christian Street and will not be visible beyond Choate property. Choate will be responsible for its construction, maintenance, and upkeep. It will be constructed off-site and installed with minimal impact to road use, posing minimal inconvenience to the community, and will allow Choate with more confidence to host events for both the school and the community at large, with sufficient safe parking located away from the heart of campus, our neighbors, and in proximity to the facilities used most. As always, we appreciate your consideration and collaboration as we pursue this unique opportunity to improve the safety of our pedestrians, to realize our plan to move parking and traffic away from the heart of campus and our neighbors, and to expand the scope of use of our facilities with confidence in our guests' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So, what's the proposed timing here? If we were to give a nod in support tonight, I don't know if there's going to be a vote, I don't know, but let's just say, when would this be happening? You got to work with law, right? Come up with the documents, going to come back to us for approval, you know? That could take three months, let's say, so, you know, we're in the fall. Are you talking about possibly doing something next spring? Is this five years down the road? I mean, just trying to figure out what's going on.
My understanding that obviously, once town approvals were completed, that it's about a three-month construction window for completion of the bridge.
What is the, and I don't need to divert, but I'm just taking them as I wrote them down. What's the situation with the public's use of the outdoor track that's adjacent to this area?
It is open to the public, except when in use by our teams.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that, because during the pandemic, I was disappointed when I run up the hill. Anyway, the ADA situation. So, I mean, I'm familiar with this area. It's not a very wide road, so, you know, you're going to put a bridge with some sort of, you know, first of all, you're going to have to get large vehicles, right? Because I'm not anticipating that a semi is going to be restricted from this area, right? So, it's going to have to be very tall, so it's going to look like this, right? So, now I'm concerned, because I got somebody who's in a wheelchair. What's the plan?
So, in order for us to comply with State of Connecticut, the walkway on the south side, on the athletic quad side, is quite long in order for us to comply with the one foot of rise over 12 feet of length, which is the requirement. So, that's all been designed into the concept of the bridge.
So, that would mean from the parking area, conceptually, somebody in a wheelchair would start on a low-rise ramp that would gradually elevate to meet the top of this bridge, and then do the opposite coming down the other side?
Yes.
And what's it estimated the length of that spans to be?
I have it here. If you give me just one second. Sorry, Counselor Fishbine.
Oh, no problem.
On which side?
Well, I would think it would, I think we heard that it would be on both sides of the bridge, right? One way would be, you would be going southerly, the other way northerly, I guess.
Yeah, okay. So, on the low side, on the south side, would be a little bit over 200 feet long, and on the north side, it'd be a little bit less than that, about 175.
Okay. The other thing was, I heard that it would not be noticeable beyond Choate property, but I know if we're going to deal with a structure that's at the minimum 17 feet in height, which, you know, I would think you're going to go maybe higher than that. Certainly, that's the minimum spans, right? The opening, right? Your structure itself is going to be a good six, eight feet higher than that, right? So, you're talking 20, 23 feet in height. Wouldn't I be able to see that from the cemetery?
No.
No.
Really?
No. So, we've done a proximity view shed as part of the design. We've done that study, and from the bridge, if you're standing on the bridge, just to orient yourself, right? You won't see the bridge coming westbound, so from the cemetery towards the center of town, you pick up the bridge at 310 feet, which is roughly just right around Old Durham Road. And then, coming eastbound, if you're traveling up Christian Street, you pick up the bridge 825 feet away, which is not far in from the corner of North Elm, probably 50 to 75 feet in, heading eastbound. You'll pick that up.
Okay. Now, I don't know if you've been shared with you correspondences that we've gotten about this project from, you know, generally neighbors, and I understand the conflict, and the conflict has been there, you know, for a while. Can you just explain to me from your perspective? Well, there's an issue with zoning. Are you aware of this? Some people have sent emails saying that this project should not be approved until there is a harmonious zone that is, that site plans don't have to be applied for every time, that the residents can rely upon the zoning regulations. That Choate has some sort of confine. You're aware of that situation? Can you just, other than what I just said, is there, is there more to that? I mean, are there discussions? Is that part of, I mean?
My understanding is that's an idea that has been floated from members of the public and residents. We are not actively in those conversations.
Okay, so there's no application, no attempt to, to ask Planning and Zoning to change the zone? Is that fair?
My understanding, it's, again, it's just been an idea that's been floated several times.
Okay. I just try to get people together, talk about, you know, things. All right, that's, I enjoyed the discussion, and I look forward to learning more about this project, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, welcome. So, I have been both the driver-by and the parent of one of these sport activities. My daughter's played soccer in Wallingford for a long time. She plays in high school now, and she belongs to a team that rents or has a relationship with practices and games almost weekly, if not multiple times a week at Choate. And what it would require is us to park across the street, down and away, and then most, sometimes people walk down Rosemary Lane, cross Christian, and then they're walking on the side of the road up. Recently, I think the part of the lawn was mowed, so that it created more of a path through the field up above, but they're still crossing Christian Street. And I've been driving by when other games have been going on, and there's a lot of little kids and parents and, and things like that. So, I definitely see this as a, as a major safety issue, not just for the students, the citizens, the drivers, but visitors coming into Wallingford as well. Because I can tell you, from driving all over the state for these games for all these years, when these games end, whether you have a game at, you know, starts at 9:30 or ends at 1:00 or 2:00, you're staying in that town to have lunch, because your kid's hungry. She didn't eat before the game, so you're going to stop downtown or down on Route 5 or something. And these aren't usually, like, it's not like North Haven kids coming here. They're, like, coming from Fairfield County, Hartford, Massachusetts sometimes. So, I guess I'm, I'm in favor of, of the concept. I guess the details of the plans, which we, which we don't have, sure, there could be something that, that poses as a red flag, but we won't know that until it happens. So, in the meantime, I'm, I'm in favor, and I guess I applaud you a little bit for, for trying to clean up that, that mess, because it is a little harrowing coming through, and you've got two teams leaving and two teams coming at the same time. So, that's, you know, 11, 14 kids on a soccer team, their siblings, the parents', equipment, and it just gets really crazy, so, that's where I am right now, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to ask about the new admissions building and the parking below. How many parking spaces are going to be below the admissions building? Do you know offhand?
I think it's just under 80, like
Just under 80?
76 or 78, something like that.
And are there any plans to address the concerns around pedestrian traffic down in the Elm and Christian area? Because, like, I've lived in the area for, well, probably better than 24 years now, and while I can relate to Counselor Laffin's discussion around the, the field use, which, by the way, as he pointed out, isn't Choate students. These are teams that rent out the facilities, so it's not just for students that this walkway's for. This is for baseball, people who use the facilities. Excuse me. But, but as a resident, my concern has always been the bottom of the hill. And if you try to get through there in the morning, when school buses are in play, and there are faculty, students getting on buses in there, and you're trying to get to the Merritt Parkway, and you live on Old Durham Road like I do, a bridge across North Elm or South Elm and Christian would be wonderful. A bridge up at the top of the hill would only be used when sports were in play. And I'm not doubting the need for safety and so forth. I'm just, there's also, unless I'm mistaken, there's really no way to walk from the admission building up to those field areas with sidewalks on either side of the road. Is that correct?
You can walk through campus, but
But you got to, yeah, but you can't walk on Christian Street up, right? There's no sidewalk on either side, right?
Correct.
So, if people come and park down at the admissions building, they would still have to walk up through campus and then, or go around. So, aside from the overflow parking and the new parking spots you put up where there was, I think there was a soccer field there at one point, there, other than the overflow areas, there really isn't any parking up there, right?
There's existing parking near the rink and the gym, but is also heavily used. So, again, this just gives us more flexibility to have more going on. You know, if we're hosting the Hawks, that takes a lot of that rink parking offline. If we wanted to do something on the fields or the cross-country course or something, this is, this is where this becomes very helpful.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Counselor Testa.
Reach for the button under here. Thank you, and good evening. Thanks for being here. I have a lot of different thoughts on this. My first thought upon seeing the plan is it has real, really has no impact on the community. It's your property. You're looking for permission to use our air and put a bridge over. And if anything, it would reduce the amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic, crossing the street. So, there, I have no reason to object to it. No, I'm not done. No, but I mean, and that's how I've been feeling about it. But, as a result of this, and prior activities over the last year or two, there have been a lot of concerns raised by people in the community. We get contacted a lot, folks have talked to me, about this, the feeling that people wish that there was more back and forth between the town and Choate regarding your plans, your long-term plans. Now, when I see this bridge, I had someone say it to me yesterday or today, it's a bridge from nothing to nothing. But I, why do I know this? I don't know why I know this, but I assume that your plan is to put in a football stadium or another football field, because you lost a football field that you had. So, I didn't need to necessarily know that. The fact that you wanted to put this crossing in made me realize, yeah, they're probably going to put a new football field up in that end, and that will lead to a lot more activity, so on and so forth. But I'm speculating. You know, it's been pointed out that you may have applied for some variance on heights of poles and lights and a scoreboard, which, again, makes one think, well, there must be a football stadium going in at some point. Now, I've always believed that you're a property. I very believe, very strongly in property rights. You're a property, you can do whatever you want with it, provided you adhere to whatever the zoning requirements are. And when it And when it impacts traffic and so forth, then we go through planning and zoning and so forth and so on. But again, there's, there's always that, I'm being straight up with you here. There's always that feeling for a lot of people, especially those close by, that it's piecemeal, it's sprung on the town, there's not a lot of upfront warning that this is coming, and you must have a master plan, but we don't really know what it is. So, while you're not required by any means to share that with us, in the interest of community relations, it'd be nice if you did, or if we felt like you, you did. And I think that's what's behind a lot of folks having a problem with, with this and other things that have gone on. I, I'm really relaying concerns that have been brought to me. As I said, if it's your property and you can do whatever you want with it, provided you, you know, you adhere to our zoning regulations, but there are always impacts, even if it's not, if it doesn't cause you to fall outside the guidelines, there are, there's a feeling that there are impacts, whether it's traffic, more this, more that. And again, it brings us back to that feeling that can't we, can, can we talk more as a community and an organization, more about what your big long-term plans are? Involve us a little bit more, whoever we may be. Let us know what is going on. And I, and I say that because I sense, I don't know, more and more resistance as time goes on to the more you do, more and more objections. And granted, most of them are from folks that are close by, but more and more objections from the way things are done. Not saying you're doing anything wrong, you know? And if there's a real complaint, maybe it's with our own zoning folks. But there's that feeling. And then you tack onto that, you know, the difficulties with the regular crossing and traffic, and everybody has great ideas, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? And I was thinking, and I'm gonna ramble, and it's what I do, we, the, the North Elm Christian Crossing, which is incredible. I live on North Elm, right up the street, so I pass, and I work at Lyman Hall, so I'm passing through there multiple times a day. Someone said, well, why can't you put a bridge there? Well, it's a four-way intersection. How do you put a bridge on a four-way intersection? Someone, you can only cross one street with a bridge, with a bridge. That, that's problematic. I don't know what you're, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying. I don't know if it works there. Up the street a little bit where you put the lights, there's a lot of crossing there. It's managed okay. I, I do think we need to talk more about improving the management of the student flow across those streets. Is that directly related to this project? No, but you're here. And there, frankly, there are other things I'd like to see us talking about that aren't related to this now and should be at least discussed privately to begin with. That's other stuff. So, I think what I'm getting at is, I'm looking to the administration, I'm looking to my colleagues, and I'm talking, looking to you. How do we sit down together and start talking about the big picture, other than when something comes to us like this on an agenda item? I mean, there's a lot, I'm throwing out, there's a lot I think we need to talk about. And how can we do that? But as far as this, and then the idea of zoning came up. And I know Counselor Fishbein asked if you had inquired about zoning. From what I've seen and heard, I don't think they would have. I believe it's members of the public have suggested that may, maybe a planning district, a new type of planning district be discussed, similar to maybe what Hamden has with Quinnipiac. But that's all, that's a new zoning district. How do we, how do we approach a discussion of that? I would ask our town attorney. We must start with the town planner and the planning and zoning.
Yeah, you would have to have that conversation with planning and zoning.
We started with them.
Right.
And just as a matter of practicalities, how do we do that? We ask for it, we invite them, we talk about it. Because if there was a prospect for that, that's one of the reasons people have been asking that we put a hold on this, in hopes of maybe we pursue something like that. And I don't even know what that entails in the big picture, but, you know, I, I'm just throwing everything out there that's been brought to our attention in front of you so that you could digest it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be brought to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do they have an interest in it? Does it make sense for this? You know, my understanding of such a district, you know, usually it's done and designed in such a ways that regular zoning doesn't quite fit, so it creates this district and, you know, careful what you ask for, it may actually grant more opportunity to do different things. I think, I did talk to the town planner about the Quinnipiac one. I think he thought that it was somewhat vague in terms of its aspects of it, but that's, that's the starting point. So, you know, certainly inquiring if the Planning and Zoning Commission has any interest in looking at this. You know, certainly, you know, I had started to look just to see if I could find other examples of what they actually looks like. I mean, they can be very detailed, but, I mean, it's, it's interesting. I know one town has the possibility of doing one, you have to, if it involves an area where multiple owners, you have to have the consent of all the owners. I mean, it's an interesting concept, but I don't think it's necessarily a simple one and that would have to be, that's really the starting point is to have that.
Right. Thank you. And I-
And I'm not sure frankly, that because this, I don't know, I'm not sure that this, this project in particular would be something that would even fit into that. I'm not sure, because it involves a town road, so it's kind of unique in and of itself.
Well, I, I, and I may be mistaken, but my, my initial impressions are, my initial impression has been that at least one of the driving factors behind suggestions for that would be more awareness of what your plans are. So, I, so in other words, if the, if the point of having that district is to be more involved in earlier, in reviewing with you what your plans are, so that we're more aware of them, that's, again, that's a communication type of thing, and which I, I think we need to improve on. It may not require a new district, but, I mean, do we establish a little liaison committee? Do we get together once or twice a year and, and talk about what your plans are so the community is a little bit more involved and aware of what, what they are? I, I've said a lot. I, I guess, let me know what you think.
And I, I can speak a little bit to that.
Please.
I think that, because some of these things did come up when we were going through the Car Hall admission building approval process. And actually, I think that some of what you brought up is a, is a great example of why it isn't so set in stone. We are in a competitive market. We, you know, look, not every student that wants to go to boarding school wants to come to Choate. State-of-the-art facilities and a top-notch campus are something students are looking for, and they're looking for in other places as well. So, it is really important for us to continue to improve our facilities so that we can continue to attract the students that we need to meet our enrollment. And, and that competition is real. Boarding schools are, are closing. You know, upwards of ten have just closed this year. So, our, our industry is, is challenging in that way. And then the other thing that I would say is we are also beholden to fundraising. This is not, you know, our projects are not profit, you know, based outcomes. They are based entirely on capital fundraising. So, we are dependent upon what our donors also decide is important to the school at any given time. Lining those things up with windows and opportunities are, is part of our challenge. And I think Car Hall is a really good example of that. Yes, we sought approval for a football field up where, you know, we're talking about now, and we were granted approval for lights and a scoreboard, but the cost was prohibitive. And I believe this was clarified during the Car Hall approval process. But we planned to put our football field right back where it was. It has historical significance. People at Choate like it, and people in town like it. So, just to allay fears, but it's, it's also a reflection of how processes change and, and our plans change. As we looked at Car Hall and we understood that we could make a better football field where it was, it became apparent that that was the best thing to do. So, plans are only set as, as far, you know, as far down the line as they're set, and, and things tend to move. Cost is a, a condition, time is a condition, and really, you know, the needs of our students and our community are very much top of our mind as well. You know, we've put resources in places that we wouldn't necessarily have thought that we would have coming out of the pandemic. Our students have needed different things. So, we wanna be responsive to where the school is at any given time. And to your point on communication, I would just say, as the chief communications officer, I welcome anyone in the community to call me anytime. We, we did reach out and put together a website, you know, Choate and Wallingford, which has a lot of resources in it. We have a full-time community relations manager. We do a community leader's breakfast annually with the intent of informing folks of what's going on, and send out a quarterly newsletter, but if people have suggestions to improve upon that, I'm all ears.
I appreciate that. So, you're not looking to put a new football stadium up on the, on the other end of this walkway?
It was never a football stadium. It was a field with lights and a scoreboard, but no, yes.
Field, same stadium. So, that's not happening?
The plan is to put it back where it was.
Okay. It's good to know that, because as I said, I was assuming. Yeah, thank you. I'm good for now, but thank you. Again, I would stress communication.
Thank you.
And I'll have more to say in later dates. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But Mr. Testa did, did cover everything that I was going to cover, so I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Carver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm open-minded on this and, you know, but I wanna absolutely hear from the residents tonight and see what they have to say. But my question about this project is whether or not we've discussed compensation. The administration, our towns administration or the Choate administration, has there been any talk about compensating the town for this aerial easement?
It's something that's challenging to value. It's, it's not something that we would be using. You know, we're, we're not necessarily giving up something, and we could try to find an appraiser who might be able to try to put a value on, on this. And I'm not suggesting that, that, that's an impossibility, but it's a challenge. So, we, we haven't yet discussed compensation, because we're currently, you know, at, at a loss as to how to calculate that.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I still think it's something that we should look into. I think if we're gonna give our air rights, whatever it is, away, that the town should get some form of compensation. As long as it's fair, you know, I would be on board. Janice?
So, I did consult with a, an appraiser about whether you could put a value on that. And normally, an air easement is valued based upon what the owner of the property loses. You can't go up, right? So, you have an apartment building, it's too far, two stories high, somebody buys your air rights, you, you can't go up to four. So, the concept of doing that, obviously it doesn't apply in this case, and the appraiser was at a loss as to how you would go about that from that perspective. So, I will point out that any, all the discussions have been that the structural support for the bridge, we felt it was important that it be on their property solely, so we really are talking about only the air rights in terms of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now. It is something I want, you know, that I certainly am keeping in my, the back of my mind, and something that I think we should consider before approving this.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Fishbein.
I have to say that you're very good representatives of your institution. I, I'm very impressed. Bill, I've always been very impressed with you anyway, but, you know, a, a business, as you recognize, is not required to disclose to government its, its long-term goals, its plans, because as you recognize, those flex based upon income, donors, and all of that stuff. So, I, you know, I'm concerned by the representation, we have no plans to put in a football stadium, because there may be a plan five years now down the road, and I don't want somebody coming here and saying that you were less than honest. So, I'm not here to lock you into anything here, okay? You know, if a football stadium is in the future, there are other divisions of our town that would deal with traffic and parking and, you know, environmental concerns and, and all of that stuff. All that's before us here tonight is safety. And, and I have to say that I think that's what we're purchasing here. You know, a check for safety is just inappropriate, because as recognized, you know, we've, let's say if we own the land, right? And easement would inquire the encroachment as well as the access, but you own the land, right? As recognized, we have no intention of doing anything with the air. And essentially, you're coming to us saying we want to make our facilities safer, and, and I think we all recognize the pedestrian traffic. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a good plan. Haven't seen the documents, but I have to say, you know, we look at other towns that surround us, you know? Quinnipiac moved into North Haven and has done good, and in Hamden, in Cheshire, you know, Cheshire Academy's been there for years, and, you know, they maintain their properties. And every project that Choate has done has enhanced the town. Now, maybe, you know, there's been problems in neighborhoods and stuff like that, and we always have the issue with, you know, a property comes off the tax rolls, so be it. But, you know, somebody was saying to me the other day, if Choate wasn't here, what would this town become? And I think we have to recognize that. And I'm not, you know, because should this plan be approved? I know whatever is there is gonna look nice. It's gonna be maintained. It's not gonna be an eyesore. You know, the other issues, I just can't recognize at this point. So, you know, if you're looking for some sort of wink and a nod, you know, that, that I am in favor of what's before us, I, I'll give it to you. I think this is a, a good thing, you know? I don't know if you know, but, I don't know when it was, but maybe six months ago, I was driving through the campus, and a young man happened to walk into the side of my vehicle. I, you know, we, we, he was shocked. I was shocked. You know, we, we talked it through. You know, I, I recognize the amount of pedestrian traffic. I don't drive through there very often because of the pedestrian traffic. So, I, I certainly recognize the need for something here, so, thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. Let me, let me speak for a second on the safety piece, because that's essentially why we're here. These crossings are occurring now. As we sit here tonight, there's probably occurring, whether it's Choate Summer Program students, whether it's town residents, because it's warm tonight, using the track, which we allow people to do. The parking for that facility is on the other side of the street. As a result of the Car Hall project, we've lost that parking net was overflow parking, which you've seen there many times, right on the corner. We consider that the bleacher lot, that's where the bleachers were for the football field. As part of the Car Hall approval, we're gonna lose the parking on Gunpowder Creek. There's sixty spots there that are gonna go away. We need to maintain the roadway network there for fire and police access. But those cars need to go somewhere, and they're gonna go up on the Colony Hall lot for athletic events. And those people are gonna cross Christian Street to get over to the other side of the street. We have overflow parking up there now, temporary overflow parking when we need it. We've listened very carefully to the concerns of your group, Planning and Zoning, ZBA, about the impact of vehicular and pedestrian traffic in that core four-way stop area. This moves all of that traffic to the outskirts of our campus, these decisions that we've made. We need to get people safely- We need to get people safely across Christian Street from those upper campus parking lots. Do we hope that people are going to walk down and cross by Gunpowder Creek? Sure. But they don't. They run across, and we need to solve that, which is the reason why we've expended a considerable amount of time, effort, money with design to come before you tonight. We wanted the opportunity for you to hear from us, seek your feedback, hear from the neighbors before an easement draft ever gets to you so that when that does get to you, you're familiar with the scope of this project. So, that's our intent. We can talk about the mid-block crosswalks, the work we've done, the channel students away from the four-way stop, whether that's working or not in some people's minds. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. We've installed those rapid flashing beacons at Choate's expense. We're looking to potentially, potentially upgrade that infrastructure already. As you know, with technology, there's more and more options yearly with things like that. So, we're looking to potentially now understand that that's in the town's right-of-way, so we need to seek the appropriate approvals through engineering to do any work there. We talk to our students multiple times a year about crossing the street, pushing the button. Some do, some don't. We're continually at those intersections with uniform security to help our students cross, but more importantly, to hold them in bulk on each side of those mid-block walks to let vehicular traffic come through. Is it a perfect solution? No. But it's safe and it works. And as it relates to the four-way stop, it's incumbent upon all of us to stop there. As frustrating as it might be on some days, it's incumbent upon us to stop there, let pedestrian traffic go. We were very much considering putting an armed campus safety officer back out in that four-way intersection, but it's been our experience that once that happens and you pull and the security guard leaves the four-way out in the middle and steps back to the curb, the four motorists forget who got there first. And now, it's a challenge amongst the motoring public about who got here first. So, that creates more of a distraction than just letting the pedestrian traffic flow at that four-way stop as it has to. This is a safety issue, something I take very seriously. You all know me very well. We would not be here before you if we didn't think that it was important to the safety of not only our campus residents, but town residents and visiting guests as well. To Allison's point, that project for the athletic field with the scoreboard and the lights is not moving forward at this time. But regardless, these crossings are occurring right now as we sit here, and we're looking to mitigate that. That's the intent of this bridge.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilor Tather.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So, I'm just looking at the maps that you submitted, and I know somebody had mentioned earlier about parking here to go to the hockey rink. Is that, I mean, people are really going to park there to go to the hockey rink? That seems like an awfully far walk.
No, no, that would not be our intent. Our intent is that the parking closer to the rink can be used for the rink and the gym. But when, there are days where we also want to use the fields, the cross-country field, baseball field. This is appropriate parking and appropriate proximity to those facilities.
Okay. So, rather than everybody using the lot by the rink, you're saying? Okay. So, what exactly, if you could just point out, so people in this lot, just by looking at the map, where exactly do you think people are going to park to? What facilities would they be using if they're parking in this lot? Because it's just, it seems pretty far, you know, kind of in the outskirts of your property. So, is your intent that you would have people park there to go to the academic buildings, for example? Or what's the intent of this lot?
So, the Colony Hall Lot currently is used by daily faculty staff for that side of campus. That overflow lot will be very helpful when we have busy days on that upper campus area, potentially when we have WSO at Colony Hall or something going on at the upper turf fields, which are the newest fields kind of behind Toby House across from Old Durham Road. So, in the event of a soccer tournament or a big field day, that would be appropriate parking with this safe crossing.
Okay. So, are you thinking that this bridge will be used daily or more for when there are big activities going on?
I think it will be used daily because our students go from classes to the gym to get their gear, to come back across often for the facilities that are on that side. So, that would be the cross-country team, baseball, soccer, and those fields are used, you know, seasonally for those events.
Okay.
As well as the Maguire Gym, which is the small gym on that side of campus.
Okay. So, if a student were to go, have to go from the gym to one of those fields, they're crossing that street currently? Okay. Just look at my notes here. So, I think, you know, just to respond to a few of the things that came up, the idea of the residential zone, I know I spoke with a few neighbors about this. I'm, you know, trying to also kind of sort of be careful what you wish for. I think, I'm not sure that that really addresses the issues that some people were stating because I think the decisions that people are unhappy with came from zoning, to be honest. So, I think, you know, to make Choate be a special zone, I kind of like the fact that you're in the, you're a residential zone. So, when Choate has to ask for things that, you know, variance to not meet something that's in a residential zone, I think that's probably the right way to go because you are in a residential zone. And so, I think keeping the look of a residential zone, you know, is probably beneficial even though, you know, maybe people don't like some of the decisions that have been made. I think, you know, people were concerned, the concerns I was hearing were bigger picture. You know, what is this bridge going to? What is this, what's the purpose of this? And we talked about the football field, you know, and things like that. But I'll, it sounds like maybe you're trying to revamp all, redirect your parking, I guess, now with the Car Hall. The, I mean, the pictures, the renderings of the bridge are beautiful, so I'm not concerned about that at all, the aesthetics of it. Another concern, and this is why I'm kind of hoping we're not making a decision tonight. I know there's no motion right now, is that for, it's kind of seen as a big decision. It's a kind of a big ask, and people are concerned with the timing. It's coming out in the summer months. You know, the agenda just came out on Wednesday, so a lot of people, you know, I got a few calls today. I didn't even know about this until last night, and I, you know, so I'm hoping that the council's not deciding anything tonight just to give people a little more time with this. But like I said, there's no motion right now. Compensation came up. One of the things I hear, and, you know, it's kind of a tricky thing to talk about, but, you know, people say things like, well, they don't even pay taxes. And I know we had discussed last, I think it was about last summer, about this time, about we were going over the chart from the assessor and how much is taxable and how much Choate pays. You know, so just to bring it up again, you know, and this is, this is going with, I believe, the former mill rate. This is, this chart might be two years old, but if everything were taxed, it would be $4.94 million, and what Choate pays is $17,000. That's per state statute. That's nothing, you know, Choate's not doing anything wrong. The town's not doing anything wrong. That's, you know, how it is. But, you know, some of the complaints by people are, you know, they don't pay taxes and I do, and I would just like to know more about what's going on. I'd like to know more about what's going on in my neighborhood. So, again, if, you know, if we are going to talk about compensation or, you know, some sort of a pilot or something, I think, you know, just to, you know, it was brought up last year, it's kind of coming up again now. These are just some of the things that I've been hearing from residents, so just wanted to keep that all in the forefront. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council? Any public comment on this item?
Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive. So, this pedestrian bridge goes from temporary overflow parking to your fields, right? It's just a field where they're parking, where that bridge is coming from?
Well, where the construction originates, I guess I'm not sure of your question.
Where the parking is, what is it right now?
Grass.
Grass. It's just a field. It's overflow parking. And it's only, that parking is only for those areas right across the street, right? Because nobody's going to walk from up the street to there to use the bridge.
So, that, I want to make sure.
I don't think.
If I could.
Hmm?
I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. So, the Colony Hall Lot is the primary parking for that area. There's 128 spots, I believe, there. This plan calls for a very small permeable surface parking lot. I don't know how many cars would be in there, but I say small, 15 or 20. And then, when all of that gets overwhelmed, we have a temporary grass field up there that we can park cars on. But the approach, to hopefully answer your question, the approach to cross the bridge comes from the Colony Hall Lot across Rosemary One, and then from that permeable paved surface, a walkway from that. So, these two walkways would kind of merge and then eventually make their way up onto that wooden boardwalk and then cross to the other side. So, there's multiple parking areas up there that would all eventually, once you get on the path, lead to the bridge.
So, how many parking spots? How many parking spots are going to be, how many parking areas are going to be used by, from people to use that bridge? How many cars? How many people?
I don't know about people.
I mean, how many parking spot, how many cars does it hold? All the areas you're talking about?
Three or 400.
And is it, is it easily, is it easier to get to the bridge or just walk straight across the street from those other parking spots?
No. The way it's designed, it'll be easier to get to the bridge.
Well, I mean, walking across the grass. I'm not talking about your sidewalks. Straight as the people walk?
So, right now, if you were to come down Rosemary Lane and not stop.
I do live up there, so, yeah.
Right? You know where I'm talking?
Yep.
You come across the street, you know that there's two bollards there.
Yep.
That's going to be closed off as part of this with an earthen berm planted appropriately. So, where people now are walking down Rosemary, looking both ways and running across, they're running across to those bollards. We get some crossings at the crest of the hill where that small gravel lot is on the south side that gets overwhelmed and very quickly, there's only 15 or 20 spots there. So, to try to answer your question, all of these lots will lead to, through our own direction, closing these open areas with berms and pushing pedestrians to the bridge. That's the intent.
All right. So, the bridge serves everything on that side, the bridge, for people parking on one side. It serves all peoples, all the people who are going to park on that side are going to use the facilities on the other side of the road. And that's not for students, then? It's just for people parking there or driving there?
No, it's for, it's for anybody that needs to cross Christian Street from the north side to the south side. So, it wouldn't be just visitors.
But this doesn't alleviate anything farther up Christian Street because it only comes from the art center right there across the street, above the hill, before the cemetery.
Okay.
Right? You understand what I'm talking about? I'm just trying to get a clear picture because I didn't understand. Because for me, it really is a bridge from a temporary parking lot and maybe a few other parking lots to your athletic field, and it doesn't, I mean, I live there, I drive there every day, and I don't see that much of a problem. I see more of a safety issue farther up the road than I see there, in all honesty. And I just, I mean, I don't care about paying for airspace. I really don't care about any of that. I just want to see that there's a real plan for, that's a great plan. Safety's great, but what about the rest of it? And as for the, your answer for the four-way stop, we all have to stop, and I do stop, and sometimes I wait while the kids trickle across for 20 minutes while, because I have to, so I have to leave earlier. So, yes, a crossing guard is a good idea. It doesn't cause confusion with people. People will figure it out. People like to go a little quicker, but that's not what we're talking about. I'm sorry. I want, I want to be very clear that I believe that it goes from a temporary parking lot and a few others to a field because otherwise, they're going to park there. And I believe that the problem is caused, you had the car center, and I think the car center is good, even though maybe I didn't vote for it. But you caused this problem with more parking on the other side of the road by doing that. Because you lost spots when you did it, right? Did you lose parking spots with, from the car center for those fields and other buildings?
We lost what would be the parking that used to occur on the bleacher grass field on the corner.
So, you actually caused the problem and the need for the bridge with your plan?
Well, you know, I'm not sure that I would say that. What I will say is that this plan to push parking to the outer limits of the campus was well underway long before Car Hall was even thought of. That I can tell you.
Are you going to pave this new, this temporary lot?
No.
All right. That's it. I really have nothing else to say. Thank you, though, for clarifying everything.
Thank you.
Dave Rodriguez, 29, Overlook Drive, representing Wallingford Soccer. So, the turf field is our primary use there. The situation as it stands, the pedestrian traffic across the sightlines as cars come over the hill, crest the hill at Christian Street is unsafe. We have a, we have a current situation that's unsafe. The primary parking, whether we tell people to park at bleachers, which is no longer feasible or not, they're always park at upper campus. They, there's a gravel lot that's used. It fills up quickly. You have to, as Counselor Laffin mentioned earlier, you have to park across the street. So, you, this, this access is critical, right? And we have a situation, especially in the fall, where it gets dark at 5:00, practice is let out, and there's people crossing, crossing at all angles, and no matter what you tell people, they just, they just do what they're going to do, right? So, this is a huge safety enhancement that I'm in favor of, that the club is in favor of. We're running a camp there in August for our high school players. It's an evening camp. Fortunately, in August, there'll be daylight when the camp gets out. But for, just, just for the fact of, even if you just took soccer standalone, all the different users of the soccer field, the turf soccer field, this is a huge benefit. I just can't say enough about what this will do to improve public safety and also vehicle safety, right? Because you have, you have vehicles that come over the hill, and I've seen cars have to stop quickly, and so this will alleviate all that. So, I hope you'll give it consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening. Sean Doherty, Executive Director of the Wallingford Family YMCA, 81 South Elm Street, 8 North Turnpike. And if you can't find me there, I reside at 2 Windswept Hill Road. I'm here tonight to support the Choate-Rosemary Hall concept for an air easement to construct a pedestrian bridge over Christian Street. YMCA and Choate-Rosemary Hall have been partners for 80 years since our inception in 1944. We are proud partner and provide programs on the campus of Choate-Rosemary Hall. First, by starting on the north side of, let's say, Christian Street, which is our early childcare center. Then, we come to the south side, which is the wellness center, management classes, sorry about that, at the Worthington Johnson Athletic Center, and also lifeguard staffing at the Larry Hart Pool. We believe the bridge would be providing a safe alternative to crossing the busy street as we all heard earlier, and not only for the Choate-Rosemary Hall students, staff, the soccer, the players, but also for our YMCA staff migrating from one side of the street to the other. We also support the vision of Choate-Rosemary Hall providing overflow parking, as we discussed earlier, about, above the Colony Hall Lot, which could provide safe pedestrian traffic for additional community events such as the Jubilee Ball that I believe we all went to. And lastly, in support of healthy lifestyles, we also believe that may be an opportunity for our little ones over at the daycare center to utilize the other side of Christian Street at the Choate campus. So, thank you so much for your time and your consideration tonight. Take care.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Phil Yooker, Curtis Avenue. I've been thinking a lot about the proposal over the past five days and trying to get as much information as I could, and I hope you're getting as much information as you can. I think that tabling this conversation for another month, I don't know, I didn't get a sense whether this is being voted on. No, no motion has been made yet. I just wanted to contribute a couple of thoughts that I had had as I think about this. In the application letter, it was described that the local traffic authority had determined that this was an unsafe location. I went In the application letter, it was described that the local traffic authority had determined that this was an unsafe location. I went down to Town Hall yesterday to see if I could see the data, the stopping distances, the sightlines, information from the Highway Department manual with regard to this stretch of the road. I would love to see at which points along that road is it unsafe, and where is it not unsafe to cross, given measured braking distances and all that. For example, instead of building a large bridge, it might be possible to construct an at-grade crosswalk, even with stop signs. I think stop signs would slow traffic down. Someone mentioned cars come flying up over Christian Street coming toward campus. A three-way stop at Rosemary Lane, or a two-way stop, or a stop at Old Durham Road would slow traffic down as it comes onto campus, as well as give the opportunity to put an at-grade crossing at those two locations, which is basically right near where this bridge is being proposed. That's just a thought, not trying to solve problems for anybody. But what alternatives have been considered? Secondly, the, you have some renderings that you were looking at, and you said they look beautiful, but it's been mentioned this hasn't gone yet to our planning and zoning department, so I'm not sure that those renderings might accurately depict what this bridge might end up looking like. For example, I'm just curious if this would be considered a handicapped access ramp, or just a bridge? I think that's an important distinction, as far as planning and zoning regulations go, as the construction of this bridge. Finally, there was a lot of discussion about planned development districts. I appreciate all that discussion. I think you've been voicing what we've been saying. I think the idea is that the revealing plans, the long-range plans, we recognize that plans do change. So, I think when the request to find out what the plans are, what other projects might be attached to this in the future, nobody's saying you have to stick to those plans. Plans change, we all recognize that, but we'd like to know sort of what the plan is. I think this was connected to the development of Car Hall, but nothing was mentioned about it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public?
I had some prepared comments, but I, I think I wanted to touch on some of the comments that were made here tonight. As far as the football field, or the new stadium, or whatever it might be, and the top of the hill, I think the comment was no plans at this time, okay? And, and, and words mean something, so I, I'd like you to focus on that. The other thing was, Mrs. Cady said that there, it was going to be too expensive. Well, during the approval of Car Hall, I specifically remember Patrick Durbin saying that we couldn't find a way to get the kids there safely. This seems like a solution for that. So, so at this time, really may turn into it's going to happen. If not, history has shared, told us, that there's more development coming, right? We talked about a planned development district. Planned development district is something that, that Quinnipiac University put in place, because the development was just so fast and so extensive. We have an opportunity here to consider a planned development district. What that will allow us to do is to build a district. Now, what a planned development district is, is it allows, well, it requires, first of all, it requires that there's a long-term plan that's, that's put in place, which has to be reviewed periodically and approved for changes. So, that addresses the issue about communication, making sure that we're having appropriate communication going back and forth. You know, I think, the other thing I'd like to mention about a planned development district is, I think, is that as a condition of approval for something like an easement, I think there's legislative authority. I think the charter allows for legislative authority over planning and zoning for the, for this board, for this council. So, so we could impose a planned development district, which gives them more flexibility to develop what's appropriate for them, but, but that zone can be developed publicly, with input from the public, with input from the council, with input from planning and zoning, as to what fits best for them, and what fits best for the community overall. So, it's, so, we're not looking at this as a single, you know, increment, right? We've developed incrementally there, fif, you know, over the past fifteen years, it's been a project a year, a project a year, a project a year. There's pits down there that, where they're building Car Hall, that are filling up with water, right? We, we see it from satellite pictures, you can look at the satellite pictures yourself. So, so we don't know if they're going to continue to drain, they're actually become, coming before wetlands to revise their plan on wetlands, because something, something's changing down there. Don't know what that is yet, because I haven't seen any presentations on it. But, but these are all things that, that are very important. I think something that's notable is, in speaking with Kevin Pajini, Kevin Pajini said he has approached the school with a planned development district. He's, he's had a conversation to talk to them about this, and, and they've been, they've been called to it. But I don't know what the, that, those are my terms, not his, but they, they have, they haven't wanted to talk about this. And I, you have to question why that might be. And, and then, from what I've heard here, it seems like Wallingford Soccer is really the only reason that we need to move people currently over to there. Twist is over. I, I suppose they have, Wallingford Soccer still has some games on the turf, but to me, it doesn't seem like there's a, a lot of activity up there, when, when all Colony Hall and all of the students are, are further down Christian Street, as another town resident So, I, I think that, the other thing I'd just like to mention, there's, there's value in this, right? There's, there's value, or they wouldn't be sitting here before the council asking for this. How, how you value it from a real estate perspective is, is, you know, is not that important from my perspective. It's, it's, there's a big value, and that value is bringing Choate to the table. Mr. Tester said that we need open communication. This, this is a way to ensure that that communication happens. Putting, putting a condition on an approval for something like this would allow us to talk about a planned development district, would allow us to, to engage our planning and zoning department, talk to the people in hand, and understand about how these things work. It would allow us to consider maybe a pilot program, to, to recognize that, that Choate, right? So, nobody's denying that Choate doesn't bring value to the town. But I, what I think there is, is there's lack of recognition of the value that the town of Wallingford provides to Choate. We provide infrastructure, we provide schools, fire, police. These are all things that, that we have provided to, to Choate for hundreds of year, uh, hu, over a hundred years. And I think we need to, we need to start thinking about it in terms of those. The, the relationship needs to be more balanced. This is an opportunity to build, to, to, to achieve some of that balance by looking at a planned development district, or a pilot program, something along those lines that, that allows us to be engaged more directly. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Stephen Lazarus, 63, Curtis Avenue. The, a couple of facts, I think, to start with. One is that we don't know, we flat-out do not know Choate's long-term and even short-term development goals. We just don't know. Now, for anybody else in the town of Wallingford, that would not be that big a deal. The problem is, what's unique about Wallingford, and, and I've heard it now twice, and so I'll refer to both times, when, when the admissions office was being applied for, before planning and zoning, a lot of, a big deal was made about how Choate is internationally significant, competes internationally, it's a big deal, the world that they're in. Because they're in that world, and literally, nobody else in Wallingford is, their development plans are a big deal. Their development plans, because of their incredible success, and I'm glad that they are successful, they plan to do a lot of development. And that development will take place in the foreseeable future, and for the rest of my life, I'm sure. And so, we have a responsibility to put into place a planning and zoning vehicle that deals with that. Now, normally, if Lyman Hall, you know, it's in an administr, it's in a residential district, if they wanted to do something, that might be once every five or ten years, our current special exception regulations are fine. But, you know, when something happens two times a year, or certainly every other year, it seems sort of ironic that you would call the vehicle that you'd use to review that process a special exception case, because there ain't nothing special about it, it's coming down the road every day. And so with that, I encourage you to put what you can as support behind the changes in our zoning regulations that will make this relationship work better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Brooks, 171 North Street. Obviously, I live in the area. If I may, I'd just like to start with a couple of questions.
Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry, if you could just speak into the microphone, they're not picking up on television.
Is that a bit better?
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. If I can just ask two quick questions to start. Is there a budget price on this bridge? It's got to be something over a million dollars, I'd guess.
I don't have that information.
Okay. Well, let me ask a different question, then. Is there a budget price, there must be, on the Car Hall development?
I don't have that.
Ballpark?
I don't have that information either, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I think, I'm trying to make the point that there's a lot going on here, and, okay, we're talking about a bridge, we're talking about safety, we're talking about the well-being of residents, primarily the students, the sports, everybody else. Obviously, in that regard, we all support this. But I think the concern, well, I think, I don't want to take too much time here, but the concerns that Counselor Tester and the last speaker have been talking about are paramount in my mind. What we heard is, there is a drive that Ms. Cady mentioned about competition. That's the word I heard tonight. There's a lot that is driving what they want and what they need to do, and I get that. And, you know, there's been a history of, let's call it incomplete communication in the past, on what's happening and where things are going. I'm here to try and help facilitate a dialogue where we in the town, the school, the community is more proactive together, to do these things together. And various proposals, concerns have been made, but I think it's really important that we all recognize the big picture. Car Hall is a big message, this bridge would seem to be part of a bigger picture that we don't yet understand, and as a resident in the area, I'd like to know more, and I think everyone in this room would too. So, that's really my concern here. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This LTA was getting thrown around, Local Traffic Authority. I believe former Chief Wright used to be the, the LTA, that's what it was, Ms. Cady was referring to. So, the existing crosswalks, mid-block crosswalks, um, chief, were you, if, I guess, is it bad for me to call you former chief? Were you instrumental in those? That happened under your watch, like 2018, I think it was?
So, the design-
I can't hear you.
The design started, I think, before 2018. Don't, don't forget, at one time, there were three mid-block walks on Christian Street between North Main and North Elm. Choate expressed the desire to minimize that to the one that's there now. We worked with them to site that, I say we, the town, to site that right at the crest of the hill, which we thought was the best view for motorists traveling both east and The other mid-block walks were always there. More granite post fencing went in along that time to channel students to those mid-block walks, so they didn't run across the street anywhere there was a, a break in the fence. The rapid flashing beacon technology that's there now was underway when I arrived at Choate, so it would have been when I was the chief. But all of that, I could tell you, Mr. Comerford, more than likely, originated and was formally approved through, I, I can be assured, the engineering department, and more than likely, planning and zoning, because there's a lot going on, on the campus at that time, that I'm sure planning and zoning had some involvement in, although I'm not positive.
Yeah, okay, because I, I think my perception is, you were the, you were the chief at the time, when, when all these mid-block crosswalks happened. I think that's fair for me to say.
No, I didn't say that.
No, I said, I, that's what I said. Because it, it, number one, it kind of concerns me, because I don't, I never understood how one entity, in this case, an LTA, has the authority, and is the only authority, that allows these. Because I think right around the same time, the town of Wallingford had two mid-block crosswalks. One was at Simpson, I'm going to, it's Main Street, but where Simpson Court is, directly across the street to Kaplan's Market. There was one there, and that, all of a sudden, one day vanished. To this day, it's not there. I have no idea why, and who authorized it. There was another one, right at 350 Center Street, that went across the street. The town doesn't have any, but they get them whenever they need them, which I didn't understand. Now, the reason why I'm bringing, trying to bring this up is because I believe the other gentleman was talking about, he went to the engineering department, whatever department it was, as to what constitutes sightlines. And I believe the chief of police, or the LTA, in conjunction with engineering, formulates all these. There's something, and I don't know, maybe the, maybe former Chief Wright could explain to me if you, if you want to, but something about a three-foot person, or a three-foot sight, you're supposed to be able to see so far, and so forth, because the relevance to this is, as to where these, where these sightlines are based upon this, this applic, not application, but this, this bridge. So, how is that determined?
Okay, so, let me back up a little bit. So, the LTA, at least in Wallingford, and it may have changed since I left, doesn't have the authority to solely approve, in this case, the rapid flashing beacons. There were a lot of meetings in the mayor's office, there was a lot of discussion about whether they should be hardwired or run on solar power. There were a number of different manufacturers that Choate brought forward to determine which, which would work best. So, the LTA, and, and it could have changed, but doesn't have the authority to make those determinations solely. So, I, I just say that, to clear that up. As it relates to your question about sightlines, it's a very complex formula, and you have most of it, that you stated. It has a lot to do with roadway topography, speed limits, height of, and I, and I could be wrong, I'm trying to remember back, but I, I believe it's height of the average pedestrian, what they see, what they see during the day, what they see in the period of darkness. There, there's a lot that goes into that, but a few, and a lot of it, I'll be honest with you, is common sense. I mean, there's a lot of training to be a certified local traffic authority. In this town, it's generated by the charter who that is. But a lot of it is common sense, and a lot of it is analyzing complex roadway networks and, and solving local traffic problems. That's a, that's a lot of it. So, if you were to stand on Rosemary Lane down the bottom, just stand there for a moment. Please don't stand in the road. But if you stand on the grass shoulder, you'll see what the concern that we have is. The traffic that comes westbound over the hill, for somebody to be, if there was a painted crosswalk there, there is no way for somebody to move safely across Christian Street with the way that traffic comes over the hill. It's just the topography of the road, in addition to all these other multipliers, if you will, that generate what a proper sightline should be. Well, another misnomer that a lot of people- Well, another misnomer that a lot of people aren't familiar with is, local traffic authorities, in many towns, the local traffic authority is the CEO of the town. In many towns, the local traffic authority is the police commission themselves. A lot of towns have police commissions that manage the police department. In a lot of towns, the engineer is the LTA. But regardless, everyone falls under state regulation, which precludes, interestingly enough, changes to speed limits by local traffic authorities. That is all done through the state of Connecticut. Approval for traffic lights, red lights, that all comes down from the state. Placement of stop signs is a local traffic authority allowance. But all of that has to be approved by the state. And how the state looks at it, from an engineering point of view, is, how does traffic flow through all towns, as it relates to throughput, as it gets to state-owned roads? And the closest one to the Choate campus, as you know, is Center Street. And how does that traffic flow towards Center Street? They control a lot of the timing of the lights, to ensure that traffic on a state highway flows as it should. I know that hasn't changed. So, there's a lot of input, there's a lot of, probably algebraic formula to determine sightlines, but a lot of it, as I said, is common sense. And I think, if you were to stand out there tomorrow, you'd see what I'm talking about.
Okay, the reason why, and thank you, I didn't know I needed all of that, but I appreciate it. The reason I'm bringing it up, because they sent you a letter saying, two people, two people with authority, the former LTA and the new LTA, Chief Ventura, both do that, but you just heard, well, he's not sure, it's just common sense. That there are other components, but I also think that there's also a component, how many accidents occur, and they use that as a frequency reminder, or whatever it's called, to justify how it happens. I don't know, was that taken into consideration? How many accidents actually took place there?
The accident data, I don't have with me. I want to tell you that it's probably minimal. But I'm not, I'm not looking to even have one struck pedestrian. Right, look around the state, how many pedestrians are struck in this state? Many fatals, right? Many fatalities. People get struck by cars. We recognize that this area is not conducive to an at-grade crossing. I asked the police chief to also look at it. He concurs that it's not conducive to an at-grade crossing. Common sense would tell you that. And this solution, as we move parking further out, away from the heart of campus, is a desire for us to safely cross pedestrians from one side of Christian Street to the other, and I hope no one ever gets hit out there.
So, again, both LTAs didn't do the formulation. They didn't say, this is, this is what it is. Because one of the things that concerns me is, they just bought the, what is it called? The inn, right? The inn, they bought the inn. Now, if you're, and I'm sure that a lot of these people here live on that street, I think it's Curtis Street. If you were to come up Curtis Street, look to the left, there's probably 12 parking spots that are vacant, because you're able to see clearly to the left. But to the right, it doesn't happen that way. To the right, in front of Choate's new inn, you're, they're able to park maybe eight feet off the curb. So, at least, when I come up that street, I can't see anything to my right. And Choate wants to be good neighbor, they're concerned about safety. And we have the former LTA, if we're all in the same page, in the same dialogue, and want safety, why hasn't that even been addressed? I'm trying to put this all in the same envelope, because the same amount of space to the left should be the same amount of space to the right. But it's not. So, and again, if we're all really looking for, as far as safety goes, and I concur, safety should be paramount. When those mid-street crosswalks happened, I actually talked to Chief Ventura about it, because we had a discussion about, because I got stuck, stuck there for 35 minutes. I couldn't believe how bad it is, and most of the people you talk about, even I'm sure you guys, they say, well, everybody, everybody tries to go around Choate, because it's a big pain in the neck. Because they're all sporadic, instead of herding the students, and allowing them to go in a bigger herd, it's like the other person spoke, it's dribs and grab. I sat there with one person, and then 15 seconds later, it's two. And then 10 seconds later, there's three, there's five. I was there for 35 minutes, I couldn't believe it. So I end up calling our LTA, Chief Ventura, and I told him about it, and I was telling him about those beacons. And he says, oh, no, those are, those are delayed. I'm like, no, they're not. I went down, I filmed it. And people are actually, if they do push it, they push it in mid-gate, they're in the middle of the intersection, and the thing hits, it comes on spontaneously. So, what I don't understand is, why don't they put those on a timer, or a delay, like, just like we have on Main and Center? Where it gives the students a chance to herd, and there's one that they have a crossing guard at now, but it's a concern. And if we're all about safety, which we are, I think these things need to be addressed. Now, to shift gears back to your, your bridge, talk to me about the snow and ice.
So, it's a maintenance item for Choate. The decking of the bridge is a typical hardwood. The designer, I think, is looking at E-Pay, which apparently is known, apparently, in the hardwood industry, to be that which wears extraordinarily well. But just like any other bridge, it would shed water, and we would be responsible for maintaining, well, maintaining the bridge year-round, but for snow and ice, it'd be our maintenance issue.
Okay, so, picture this. Picture we get a big ice storm in IP, which is a Brazilian walnut, I believe it is. You would have to have, you know, gaps in between, and obviously, whatever's there would freeze back up as it accumulates. Now, you're gonna have big icicles on a, they said it's 17 feet up, at least, that causes a potential accident coming down on somebody's car. And if they do start to form, does that mean their staff is gonna go out there, knock them down? How do they get rid of them?
Yeah, that's what we would have to do.
So they're telling you right now, in front of you guys, that they're gonna have their staff be in the middle of the road, and whack down icicles? And they're talking about safety. That concerns me.
Thank you.
Let me just make a few comments.
Pardon me?
Let me just follow up on a little bit. I've been trying to write down as fast as you've been speaking. As it relates to the inn, when you come down Curtis Avenue, and Mr. Blanchard will tell you this, he and I had a long discussion about it, when you look left, or what's considered south, down North Main, looking at northbound traffic coming at you, I can't tell you what year it was, 16, 17, we had two horrific accidents between Academy and Curtis, of people leaving the doctor's offices that are scattered in there. When they came down onto the ramp, onto the apron of the driveway, to come out onto North Main, with cars parked in that area you can't see. We had one, I think it was out of Tim Wall's driveway, and another one out of the dentist office that's there. Serious injuries. So, I believe Henry McCully was still the DPW director. He met with us out there, and looked at the canopy of the trees, and between the cars parked on the shoulder, and the canopy of the trees, it was like driving into a rabbit hole. So we eliminated the parking there, and he came through with his crews, maybe it was a vendor, I don't know, and trimmed up and limbed up those trees down there, and you see how nice it flows down there. The traffic that's north of Curtis Avenue, I'm not gonna unequivocally say it's not ours, but our guests are reminded to park in the parking lot at the inn. So, there are many multifamily houses in that area, I can tell you that. The house next to the inn has very little off-street parking, and a lot of those people do park on the street. And there's a three-family, or might even be a four-family, across the street, that has almost no off-street parking, and those people park on the street. So, that would be something that Chief Ventura could look at from an LTA, he can prohibit parking there. But that's, to the point I'm trying to make, those are soluble roadway issues, right? It takes time and effort and some study. But as it relates to the ice and snow, and Janice will tell you, the draft easement that's been created, is very much looks from the town back at Choate, for everything. Liability, indemnification, maintenance, it's on our property, it's structured onto our property. We have responsibility for the whole thing. So as it relates to ice and snow removal, we're responsible for it. That's really all I can say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the traffic to the right. You just told you it was a bad accident there. So, it's owned by Choate then, right? The whole apparatus is owned by Choate, and taken full responsibility? Because my question then is, is if, I don't know, Mr. Fishbein, Counselor Fishbein said you used to go up there and whatever. If he decides to go up there and park on your secondary lot, where the grass is, and he's a town resident, and then wants to use the bridge to go to the, to the thing that doesn't exist, he's able to do that? Or is there hours of operation that a town person can do it? Say somebody works second shift, and they want to go use it at night. Is that thing, it's gonna be lit up, and anybody's able to go up there and use it, or is it gonna be by certain hours?
Are you speaking of the bridge itself?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. No, the bridge will be open 24 hours a day, it'll be appropriately lit with safety lighting. More than likely, if you were to cross the bridge and be on the track or the field, you know, after dark, community safety may take note of that, and just check on you. So we allow people to use our facilities all the time. I see people out there at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, I don't sleep too much, so I'm around. This year, we're really happy that Allison's crew was able to work with the YMCA and Sean's team, and open up our indoor track for winter walking, which was really good. We had to move some things around, to allow the public to come into a locked space. So, yeah, no, our facilities are open, as long as it's not a structured Choate event, or something that the community is using, maybe Dave Rodriguez's groups, our facilities are open. I see many people walking there daily.
Okay, so, the other gentleman asked approximate cost, say it was a million dollars. Is Choate willing to pay tax on that? Or is that's gonna be one of these items that don't fall under educational?
So, yeah, I think we're getting off track, though, because the, what's on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the air easement, right? So, I suppose that any compensation would be an element of whatever the agreement was, which we haven't seen yet.
Right, but it says possible action.
So you're asking, is Choate gonna pay taxes on something that we haven't seen the agreement for?
But it says possible action. So if you guys say yes, and it moves forward--
So, up to now, there hasn't been a motion?
But it could after I go back and sit down. Without, and I won't have the answer.
Correct.
So we don't know?
Correct, I don't know.
Obviously, I'm not a fan of this. Oh, one other question. Sidewalks, are there sidewalks on Christian Street from Elm, all the way up to where this bridge is gonna be? On both sides?
No.
So, there's no sidewalks, either side?
There are sidewalks down to Gunpowder Creek Road, and down to the PMAC.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, there are sidewalks that go down from the intersection to Gunpowder Creek Road driveway, and on the other side of the street, they go all the way to the Paul Mellon Art Center. And then they end after that.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to walk, there are no sidewalks, or that might be something else that you might want to consider. Another one, how come when I drive throughout the entire campus, it says "no parking" all the way around there? Because I thought that if those "no parking" signs were removed, including up and down Christian Street, it would give them more than ample parking.
We don't control the on-street parking restrictions, or timed parking. That's controlled by the town.
The town local traffic authority?
I believe so.
Okay, so, it's something that could be discussed, where they get removed, because you already have the beacons, and it would give you probably hundreds of parking spots all around, all around there. That's another viable option. I mean, collectively, if you put the sidewalks in, you open up the parking, you address some of these other issues, it all sounds familiar, because guy named Mike Bernuski used to be the town council chairperson, I think, at the time, and it was almost a discussion about the same thing, other than the fact that it wasn't gonna be a bridge. Choate came to the town, was trying to take over Old Durham Road. They wanted the road. They wanted it, they were gonna do all these plans, and everything else, they had all kinds of plans back then. Apparently, we don't have any plans now, except we're gonna put this thing up. They wanted to take the road like they did on Beaumont, and they also, there was talk at some point, that they wanted Christian Street in between there. They offered, and I could be wrong, but I think they offered the boathouse at the time, as a bargaining chip. Something else transpired, I think it was Beaumont Road, we ended up with the boathouse. And that thing, after we bought it, the thing got demolished, and if you go down there, it's one of the biggest embarrassments that the town owns, because it's just one overgrowth mess. So we didn't benefit from that at all. And again, we're coming back now, all right, let's do an air easement. What happens now with the precedent? If you guys say yes to this, anybody else can come here and do the same thing. Because if, if you were allowing, it's kind of like what you guys talked about with the downtown outdoor dining. If you gave it to one, you gotta be able to give it to everybody else. And I'm just saying, if this happened to George Cook years ago, and he wanted to put a bridge up, how can you say no? I don't, I don't think this benefits us, as a town, to set a precedent by doing this. There's other options that are available. I think that, like these other people, like Counselor Tester said, at least bring them to the, bring them to the table, and start having some dialogue. I'd also like to see all those "no parking" signs disappear. I used to go to the hockey rink, I couldn't even find a place to park. I was actually gonna ask Jerry Farrell if I can use his driveway. Because there's no, there's no place to park, unfortunately. And I don't think this is solving any of the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mike Thado, 377 North Elm Street. I'm sorry, guys, it's 20 after 9:00, but I'm not really sorry, I was here last night till 10:00, so, you know. Anyhow, I had a long thing to read, I put it aside, and I'm just gonna try to go through some facts. First of all, I totally agree, students first. That's been my thing, as a board member, as a parent, safety is first. So I, I will go along with that idea of a bridge for that purpose, for that purpose I'm asking you also not to make this decision tonight. As you can see, there's a lot of controversy, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered and considered. This is kind of difficult for me, because I think I've said this before, and you've probably heard, you know, I have a long association with Choate School, and my family, and it's difficult. I lived in that house, at the top of the hill, well, right before the cemetery on the right-hand side, the big three-family white house. I'd lived there when I first got married, I won't tell you how many years ago that was. So I know what you mean by safety and going up that hill. Trying to get out of that driveway was not easy. My biggest concern, folks, is that, when is this all gonna stop? I'm too, I'm concerned that there are too many things being done by this school too quickly, and I don't think the powers that be always consider the effects of some of these changes or new additions have on that area, that neighborhood, and surrounding neighborhoods, that some of these things that they do can affect those neighborhoods. I know I sound like a broken record, but my yard is a swamp in the back, where there used to be grass, and I think it got worse with those new homes being built by Choate. So I have a personal thing about that. So I think we have to think about, you know, let's slow up. That's why I do think we need that plan, that somebody's been, everybody's been talking about. So that we can look at the effects of those things that are being planned, in many ways, not just, for instance, safety. There's other things that are involved here besides safety, although I think that's number one, I want to make that clear. When, when I was in college, we were not in a neighborhood, you know, we were on a main road, and we had to park like a mile away from the school. They put one of the-- They put one of those bridges in, but it kind of fit there, you know? It was in a busy, city-like area. It's not like this, which is, you know, in a residential area. So I think that's another issue to think about. And I got to go back to the North Elm Christian. I know it's not really related to this, but it's kind of, it kind of is. Please, don't put any bridges there, number one. That's right smack in the middle of a nice area. The building that's being put there now bothers me because it used to be a beautiful view. And this garage, I don't know, I'm looking, I'm going by, and I see these high cement walls. I thought it was going to be under the ground. I don't know, I'm not an engineer. I don't know if that's the way it's supposed to look right now until it's all done. But anyhow. I like the signs with the blinkers when the kids push the button, even though a lot of them don't push the button. And I do, I say roll down my window, they don't roll windows down anymore, but I push the thing and I say, "Push the button." I do do that. Allison, I think you need to put big signs right in front of the sign, right in front of the pole, "Push the button," because they just don't think of it. In fact, coming here tonight, one kid just ran right across the street. I lived in that area for 53 years. I put up with the intersection, I could continue to put up with the intersection. You have to be careful. You have to go slowly over there, and you have to be patient. They're kids, they're crossing the street, you give them a few minutes to do it. And it's only during that class time. The rest of the time, it's fine. Just don't go there around 4:30 if you have to go someplace. Gets real bad. So that's my concern. I think you have to think of, whatever's being done, the effects it could have on the surrounding residents. Because that is a problem, folks, and it hasn't gone away. And I'm afraid with this new thing they're building on the corner there, there's, somebody mentioned water. You know, I hate the word water because it does affect all the people along North Elm Street. So just think about those things in the future again. I understand the reasoning for the bridge and its safety, but I'm just, my concern is, when is this going to stop? It's got to slow down. It's encroaching our neighborhoods and our neighbors. I just think we have to have this plan so that we can, and this collaboration between the council, maybe, and Choate or whatever, to decide, you know, to go over the plan and try to come up with ideas that are acceptable to everybody. Okay? Thank you. Please don't make the decision tonight. I think you should wait.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard Cromble, 528 North Main Street. Anytime you put vehicles and pedestrians together, you have an increased risk. There have been accidents, I lived on North Elm Street, and there were accidents between Choate students and drivers. Choate's steps that they took to put up fencing, to put in the flashing lights, all that, you know, restrict the number of crossings that they have, that all goes to minimizing that risk. And so from that perspective, I understand the reason for the bridge going up on Christian Street. I viewed Choate as a good community citizen. But that said, if Choate was my next-door neighbor, and it was constantly making changes to its property that required planning and zoning approval, I would really hope that they would come and talk to me before, you know, I got a notice from planning and zoning in the mail that there was going to be a hearing or something. So I think a lot of the pushback that you're hearing tonight is, goes to what Counselor Testa said earlier, communication, you know, having that dialogue. Plans change, but being able to look out and say, this is what we're thinking of in the next year or two years, you know, I think would give people a chance, maybe people don't agree in the end, but at least give people a chance to see what's coming, to kind of contribute their thoughts, and before an architect renders a bridge or a drawing for a building or something, you know, you have that input upfront. And I think that if anything could come of this, you know, better communication between Choate and the community would help. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. A fairly quick question, and it's really, I came here just to listen mostly, because I only got this information when the council agenda came out a few days ago. When I saw this on the agenda, I expected it was going to be about the KEC. So I'm just curious, since we're talking about safety on the upper campus, is there any plan to have some connections to provide safe pedestrian access for the KEC students?
There's no current plan. They are, they have a shuttle that takes them back and forth to campus throughout the day.
Okay. And just, I mean, by the way, a follow-up is the reason why? I mean, it seems like it's a two-for-one here, right? Like if you're already in the business of putting in a bridge, like that's what you would need to get across from the KEC onto the main property there. It always struck me as funny that, like, you've got environmental students up there, and they have no way to walk to campus, that they have to take a bus to go less than a mile.
There would be two road crossings for the KEC students. I mean, we haven't discussed it, we certainly, we certainly could, but there would be two instances where they would need to cross the road. We haven't discussed it. I will say it's an electric bus. Makes you feel better.
Sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
An electric bus.
I didn't hear the last part.
It's an electric bus.
An electric bus.
We've done our best on that front.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the only reason I was, like I said, I was thinking about it was because I expected that was going to be what this was about, and then when Chief was saying, you know, we value the, every single, you know, safety of every single person, I was thinking, there it is, that's the window for the KEC. So I hope that gets considered in the future if we're already going down this road. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Going back to the council? Mayor, Counselor Fishbein?
You know, on a certain level, I don't understand the opposition because I hear safety is paramount, and people are talking about other things. All that's before this body is the potential for a bridge. This body doesn't create zoning regulations. This body doesn't create zoning zones. There's a whole procedure to do that. I believe any resident of the town, and I don't want to give legal advice, but obviously somebody hasn't looked at this stuff, can submit a proposal to planning and zoning, okay? So, but what's before us is something totally different. What I'm hearing is, we want to have a seat at the table when a private entity makes their decisions, which, you know, we don't, we didn't say to Bristol Myers, you know, we're going to control through residents what you do, what you expand, what you don't expand. That's what I'm hearing is the ask here, which I really, I have a lot of difficulty with that. Communication is subjective. You know, there are levels of communication, and sometimes people hear what they don't want to hear or don't hear enough, and then it's you're not communicating. But perhaps there was communication, and I don't know. But here, we have an entity that is coming to this body that owns both sides of the road. I mean, I think that's important because when, you know, somebody said, well, you know, you give this for one, you've got to give it for others, you know, there are, I can't think of any instance in this town where a private property owner owns both sides of the road and has a safety issue that would call for something like this. A very large expenditure. I also heard, when is this going to stop? Maybe it'll never stop, you know? We can't stop a private entity from buying up property and developing it. We have zoning regulations. And once again, planning and zoning deals with, and I've been involved in these cases, you know, is the project going to create too much traffic? Is the project going to have too much water runoff? You know, the whole Amazon thing up on the hill with Bristol Myers and all that stuff, that was the neighborhood, not before us, they were before the appropriate body that was dealing with those issues. So, you know, I don't want the general public to think that's watching this, that we have the ability to change the zoning, or that we have the ability actually to force a private entity to, you know, add residents to a certain group, to have some sort of a vote at the table, a checkoff on what that entity does. I suppose that individuals that make donations to the entity, they have a seat at the table, right? They say, the entity goes to whomever and says, "We want to build an environmental center, will you give us a lot of money?" Right? They have a seat at the table. But merely being a resident, you know, in the neighborhood, I don't, I don't believe that there is a level of entitlement that can be forced on. And, you know, for this body to say, "Well, you shouldn't be approving unless you assure us that we are a part of not only the present, but everything in the future?" I just don't see myself supporting that. So the item that's before us, I think, is a good initiative. It's a good step forward. Haven't seen the language, but I personally like everything that I've seen. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lefen?
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Chairman through the chairman to the mayor, do you need anything from us, or am I right in that the conversation has just kind of indicated that the negotiations could continue and a decision will be made when there's something in writing?
Thank you for asking if I need anything. This was the initiation of the conversation. I think that Choate wanted to read what the council had to say, and I think there's enough positive that they're going to continue with the process and go through the rest of the approval processes they need to go through here in Town Hall. We'll be back before you when we have a draft of the easement. So I think we're set.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and on to item 12. So discussion possible action on the fire department RFP study. So this was my item. The mayor was kind enough to ask the fire chief to work out some documents or a document for a potential RFP. So that was included in the backup for the packet. I guess my motion is that we move forward with the RFP as discussed, open to potential changes that folks thought would be appropriate for this. So I open it for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I need to give credit where credit is due, and Deputy Chief Wilson sent this to me before I asked for it.
Oh, excellent. All right, well, I highly appreciate his initiative on this then.
Yep.
All right, so item move to move forward. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had sort of expected somebody from Fire Administration to be here tonight because I wanted to know what was used to make this. My concern is that, you know, I know that this body, I think unanimously, supported this, but there is adversity perhaps from inside the department of the study. And my concern is that, not knowing a lot of, not knowing as much as I do about other areas, the, this requirement could be written in such a constraining fashion that no one can adequately meet it. So, you know, one of the questions I would have asked the administration is, where did you get this from? Has another town used this exact language? You know, and what was their result, right? So, because we don't want to have the result that, oh, well, nobody qualified, right? The other thing is, I understand what's contemplated here is two different studies. One is a standards of cover study, and the other is a feasibility of options for fire services delivery system study. And I couldn't tell from this whether or not it was contemplated or available that perhaps two different entities could be involved? Or was it anticipated that only one entity would be doing both studies? I just couldn't tell from this. So I don't know what the desires are there. And then, under financial information, which is on the third page of the document, we are requiring that the applicant, please provide a comprehensive pricing breakdown for the project detailing the costs of personnel services, salaries, and benefits. So we are requiring an applicant to let us know what benefits their employees are getting? I've never seen language like that before. I don't know why we would be asking for that. So those were my questions. Unfortunately, there's nobody here from Fire Administration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You know, I would agree on the financial information. When I saw that I wasn't entirely clear, but we wouldn't just get a cost to present the, to perform the study, like a one comprehensive cost for what's the whole study cost and the presentations and so on. But again, I'm not sure how to answer that. Moving on to Counselor Testa.
Well, I was simply going to ask if there was any estimate right now on what you thought this was going to cost us, but clearly, there's a, you're asking in the proposal for cost. I wasn't sure if there was any, any idea right now what this may cost us. And my other, my response to Counselor Fishbein would be, we can cross out things and make changes to this any way we want. That salaries and benefit thing was a little, seemed a little odd for me too, but that's all.
Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My initial question was actually going to be, what was the source similar to Counselor Fishbein's? Just because this kind of, when I saw this, it seemed pretty comprehensive, the questions were pretty pointed, and, you know, I was just, I, so, that was my first question, obviously. I think Chief Wilson was the one who sent it over, I guess. And then the other piece too was also similar to Counselor Fishbein's. Is there, there's a standards of cover study, and then there's a feasibility study, so I wasn't sure why we were, you know, is this, is this all a cart picking? Is this the kind of things that we can get? Or is this everything? It says it's both, so, and similar to what Counselor Testa said, we can do whatever we want, I guess, so. It's just, those were my questions that I had when I started looking over this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, my first question was going to be, who wrote the RFP or where we got it from? But we've already answered that, so it looks like the acting chief is where this came from. I'm not sure if he wrote it himself or, you know, just got this from maybe another town who's done this. But the reason I was going to ask that is because I think, I don't, I don't think this RFP is getting after what the council has been looking for and talking about for several years. And with all due respect to, you know, Chief Wilson, it's, I don't see the, the issues that we've been, this covers a lot, but I think the issues that we've been talking about, I'm not sure that this would necessarily cover. And what I would hate to happen is that we spend money, and then we get this back after talking about this for, I don't know, three years, four years, and then we say, well, this wasn't what we were looking for, we really wanted to know the answer to this, and they didn't even discuss that. Or I thought they were going to look into this, but they didn't look into that. So I think this needs to be much more specific, and I think the council should put that specificity in here. I don't know if we can ask specific questions after the fact. Maybe the RFP goes out as is, and then the council's able... and then the council's able to say, you know, "We want you to look at this, this, and this." But I think it's cleaner to have that spelled out in the RFP. So, one of my questions, too, and it's not spelled out in here, is, who exactly would the people conducting this study, who would they be meeting with? Will they be meeting with just chief officers? Has that been discussed with the administration? Or how would that work? I'm not sure who that question's really for, but I'm just interested in how this study proceeds because it doesn't say in the RFP, you know, how. I know at the last meeting, we had talked about, you know, they come in and they have lunch with the chief officers and I'm assuming this is not that, but it's not spelled out. So do we know, do we have an answer to that?
So I don't think we do, and I think we could outline. I mean, I think if you had, your question seems pointed to, so I think you have something in mind in terms of what you, your expectation is. And I'm not sure, you probably have a better expectation than I do as far as what it should look like.
Yeah, sure, I can go into it a little bit if that's hopeful.
I mean, I think, so there's a couple ways, I think, that we could tackle this, right? Because this is kind of a big nut to crack. And we have a situation right now where we have an interim chief and we have, you know, there's been, there's some, some things have come to light recently that I'm not gonna talk about but that, you know, raise other questions in the department. So I think, there's a couple ways we could look at this. If it's just to refine the RFP, we could certainly have a subcommittee of the council meet and discuss potential proposals and bring it back, you know, later if you thought that was appropriate. Or we can discuss now and make adjustments to it as we see fit.
Okay, I guess, well, yeah, let me, I'll just spell out my notes on this and then we'll see, you know, what we want to do. But, you know, one of my concerns is that we need to make, I wanted to make sure that all parties are involved in this and possibly interviewed or asked questions. I'm not sure how these studies typically go, but I think, you know, we're talking about a staffing model. That's one of the big things that we've been discussing for years. So I think, you know, you would need to talk to EMTs of the new system, EMTs, firefighter EMTs who are on the old system, chiefs, battalion chiefs, lieutenants, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, the volunteer chief officers, volunteers, union members, union leadership. I think it'd be interesting to talk to firefighters who have only been in Wallingford file department and also those in our department who have been with other departments. And maybe they have a different view on, you know, how things worked and what we do better and, you know, what maybe we can improve upon. So that was my first thing, just who exactly is going to be involved in, you know, providing information. You know, the other, so I think that's the one main issue, is the staffing model, right? So we've been talking about the cost, the efficiency. We use hunters and AMR a lot instead of, you know, staffing that third ambulance that we've been talking about for years. It's still not staffed. And so, you know, why is that? Why are we relying on hunters and AMR when we've budgeted for that third ambulance? The other big topic, I think, is the, you know, the personnel and management relations or, you know, sometimes we say union and management relations. And that's kind of been something that we've been talking about for years, too. And so I think we really want to get to the bottom of that and what's going on there. So I think those are the two big issues, the staffing model and then the, you know, kind of just relations in the department. There are other things that were not mentioned here that I thought maybe were, and I'm probably getting a little bit, you know, detailed here, but I think it would help to have these put in there for specificity. NFPA 1710, 1720, and NFPA 1730. I would love to see that detailed in here so that the people responding to this RFP know that that's what we want them to look at. The two-in-two-out standard, that's a big deal to me. That's something that I think needs to be looked at and making sure our staffing model accommodates that. And also, the person who responds to this RFP or the group, that they have experience with combination departments. You know, it's kind of a, maybe a quasi-unique thing that we have a combination career volunteer department. And also that they have experience with collective bargaining and arbitration states because that's something that, you know, we, I think, would want to look at also, the relations there. So, though, I know that's kind of a long list, but those are the specifics that I would have liked to see addressed in here. And I think it's a little more vague than what I would like. And I hate for us to spend the money and go through this finally after talking about it for all these years and then, you know, say, "Oh, I really wish they had touched on this." Or, "I was hoping to hear about that," and that's not what we got. So anyway, those are my notes. See where the council wants to, how we want to address that. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting because as I read the proposal, focus groups was sort of like a thing that was in my head, but that could be based on my experience with, you know, business studies and not necessarily this study. So it's not in there, I suppose, you know, in terms of the means. So I guess that's something that would have to be, either we would have to request it or have them explain, you know, what the mean was as part of their proposal. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Mainly two things. The, so, well, I didn't know where it came from either, which, that kind of surprises me. And then that triggered a thought while Counselor Fishbein was speaking about the submittal requirements. I mean, it flatly says to evaluate the project impartially. It now reads to me as if, you know, it doesn't read to anybody else as if they're trying to avoid certain people from evaluating the own department. Like, why are they so curious about the names? And then what are the, what's the payout? That just seemed a little, that seems weird. That seems different to me. I liked everything that Counselor Tatta had to say. I would be in favor of a small workgroup subcommittee, three to five counselors, or, you know, whoever wants to go. But we mandate at least, you know, three show up and hammer out some of the additional details. And if somebody can't make it, then shoot over the text and hammer it out that way. I think that's the best. It's already, it's like, I always half-joke that we're a one-and-a-half-item council. And we're past one-and-a-half items for tonight. I know that it's not gonna, sitting through it and going through it tonight is not gonna get it done the way that it should get done. That's it, thanks.
All right. Any other comment on this item? Counselor Testa?
No, I would just follow up. I mean, this is something we wanted. So I don't know who we thought was going to write it. We asked for it and it appeared. And someone put a lot of work into this. And I'd be loathe to criticize it. We didn't write it. So I like what Counselor Laffin has said. We want to send this out, get together and write it. Because we have that opportunity. Counselor Tatta made a lot of good points. As I said, in reference to Counselor Fishbein's comment, "You don't like a line, strike it out." I certainly don't see us wordsmithing this this evening. It's a great starting point. I think it covers far more than we even may have anticipated. I assume, from all the discussions we'd had leading up to this, that there was concern about the way the organization is structured and staffed. And this seems to spell out in detail that we want somebody to look at all that and do a study of that. Feasibility of changes that might be called for. I don't know how we could say that there's not enough in here. But if you want more in there, put it in there. If there's too much in there, take some out. But yeah, get together, we're the ones that wanted it. So write it.
I mean, I think a subcommittee is probably the way to go. I agree. So do we have three to five volunteers to work on the subcommittee? Counselor Laffin, Counselor Tatta? I would also be willing to, Counselor Reynolds? That's four. Anyone else is welcome to join, but if not, then the four of us will make arrangements to get us together and we can see what we can come up with for the next meeting. I'm sorry, Counselor Fishbein?
Yeah, just because I'm not gonna be part of the group. I just wanted to...
We'll be thinking about you the whole time.
I'm not gonna self-appoint myself or anything like that. I'm just very cognizant of individuals that fall under a collectively bargained contract, meeting with someone, and those communications, I think they should have a right to a union representative to be with them. So I'm just, when you're working on this language, just be cognizant of at least that concern from my perspective because sometimes things come up and it ends up somewhere and those people are entitled to representation. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Totally noted. Anyone else? All right, then, moving on. The next two items were withdrawn, so seeing no other business on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.